I'd like to call to order the March 18th, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, sent it forth a time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer? Ms. Semeresti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola? Mr. Roslevich? Mr. Whiten?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports, discipline, and personnel matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 104-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if we could, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone here tonight for our budget presentation, which is our first budget presentation of the year, so we certainly welcome everyone's input and appreciate everyone being here. Linda, do we have any communications other than what's on the agenda this evening?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And tonight is our workshop meeting, so we don't actually vote on anything that's on the agenda. Everything that's on the agenda this evening is just for discussion. So number eight is correction to the minutes for the January 28, 2019 meeting. Anybody have any questions or concerns about that one?
No.
Okay, so we are going to move on to the student representative report. Good evening, students.
Hi. So for Irving School, they're starting pre-K enrollment on the 25th. Bartle celebrated Dr. Seuss and Read Across America with many school and classroom events promoting literacy, and lots of thanks to Mayor Midler, Councilwoman Welkowitz, and Councilwoman Kim Trowan for exciting and inspiring our students to read. Bartle's also having an award ceremony on the 27th.
The middle school is celebrating Women's History Month this month, and parent-teacher conferences are on the 26th. Congratulations to the Model U.N. team for a great performance in Mexico City. 16 individual awards were won by HHS delegates. The spring performance of Legally Blonde is coming up on the 29th, so make sure to buy tickets. NHS's annual fundraiser, principal for the day was today. Everyone enjoyed Mr. Bravo's great rule about no homework being assigned. There is an early dismissal on the 21st for evening parent conferences. Babysitting will be provided by NHS. And coming up for sports, baseball's first game is on April 1st against New Brunswick. We wish them the best of luck.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions this evening for the students?
No.
All right, thank you, guys. That brings it to you, Scott.
Okay, so you can see that we have a new layout for our presentations. I'm still going to get up and move towards the slides. My presentation has been uploaded to the district website, so you can download the PDF version of it if you go to the -- and there'll be a slide at the end that shows you how to get there. It'll be at the main website, hpschools.net. You'll go to the Board of Education area in the main navigation bar of that main page, and then there's a drop-down link that says budget fiscal year 2019-2020 information. And I'll also upload supplementary documents as I get them about the budget. So I'm going to spend about 15 minutes sharing a lot of numbers, which is why I do recommend you eventually download the file. And then, of course, we'll open up for questions from the board, and the public will have an opportunity to speak and ask questions if they'd like as well. This was, like it has been the case for the last three years, including this year, an extremely, extremely difficult process. You hear about it in the news. You know some districts are getting more state aid, like us. Some are getting a lot more state aid, and some, like Elbridge, are not getting any state aid. In fact, they're losing state aid. They're closing schools. So superintendents and finance committees on boards are having to confront a range of challenges, some good, some bad. Regardless, we are all spending a lot of time on the process. Those of you who've never put a budget together, just know it's not a -- you know, you look at all your -- what you're going to pull into revenues, and you look at all your expenditures, and then you figure it all out. It takes days and days to work through this process, and it starts as early as late October, early November, when the school principals provide, or they should provide, information to the teachers and support staff about their supplies for the following year. Then in December and January, Ms. Hofel, the business administrator, and I meet with every single educational leader in the district, top-down, including the facilities director, Michael Donnell, and his supervisor, Angela Melendez, and Gary Contursi, who's our chief plumber, electrician, jack-of-all-trades. And in those meetings that occur December and January, we spend about two hours with each individual, and we require them to tell us what the rationale is for every expenditure, and in some cases, reasons why they're spending less than they did in previous years. Then the Finance and Facilities Committee of the Board, which is made up and chaired by Mark Krieger, our president, Darcy Semeristi, and Rob Magaziner, who's sitting next to Mark, meet with me, Linda Hofel, and all of the school leaders again. They come out and they do their whole presentation to the board. That happens in February and March. And again, they have to rationalize every expenditure that they are proposing. We are at the place at which now, March 18th, we're having our first board discussion. This is a preliminary budget that the Finance Committee, Linda and I, are proposing to the full board. We have six weeks until we have to present the final budget in May to the Department of Education. We will be meeting with the community. We just settled on a date to meet with the parent community, guardian community. We'll be using an Irving PTO meeting. You can see that'll happen on April 10th at night. I'll provide more details, probably by Honeywell, as soon as I have them, but for now, I can tell you that it'll be evening, April 10th. And then we're going to meet with the general community, Highland Park community, at the conservative congregation on First Ave., on South First Avenue. There'll be another board discussion April 15th. That's a biggie, because I'll have Susie Boudin and DeeDee Deacher, the Director and Supervisor of Educational Services, here to talk about a program they're proposing that can actually save money as we build our own special needs classroom for students who we've sent out of district and are paying tuition to attend somewhere else, or those who we'd like to keep in district. So she'll come out and actually talk about that. That would be proposed for Bartle. April 15th is when they'll present that program and take questions from the board, and of course, if the public comes, they can ask questions about it then as well. We'll also be talking -- I might have Dr. Nikosia come. She doesn't know that yet, but I may be inviting her to come to talk about the technology initiative that we're also going to be looking at for next year, which I'll get into when I present my slides. If you had to whittle down the budget changes into a couple lines, they're here. They're here. These are the things that get me up at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning for about a month as I'm finally getting down to trying to balance this budget. I obsess about them. I think about everywhere I can recoup expenditures, how I can generate more revenue, because the bottom line is, these are things, many of which I can't control, or the board can't control. Drastic increases in our special education services, especially at Irving, with early intervention presenting student after student after student at the early ages of three and a half, four, and five, who present, in several cases, the non-verbal behaviors. They can't speak. They don't have certain motor skills. They take a lot of therapeutic support, all the way to those students who are presenting behavioral challenges at Bartle and the middle school. That has in turn increased our out-of-district tuition costs and transportation costs every year for the last three years exorbitantly. It's unsustainable. This is not something that we're going to be able to sustain. I'll get to that at the end of my presentation. The only way we're going to make our budgets work, since we've already cut to the bone, which is why a lot of you are here tonight, is if we generate revenue. We've got to find a way to generate revenue, because there's nowhere left to cut. We can't control certain things, so we have to find a way to build revenue. And of course, we are going to always incur costs for increased health benefits and salaries. One thing I would like to also highlight is the sudden flux of unilateral placements we're seeing. We saw at least three in the last couple of months. These are situations in which a family or guardian will enroll their child in another school. In our case, it's been predominantly private schools, parochial -- not parochial schools, private schools, religious schools, without, in most cases, even having gone through the Child Study Team evaluation process here in the school district, which is why it's called a unilateral placement. It's one way. We're taking this route, and we'll let you guys pick up tab later. What ends up happening is, we either -- we question as a board whether we are going to litigate and try to contest the situation. Hey, give us a chance. Why don't you send your child to our school, at least so we can evaluate over her, determine if we can provide the services? Or in other cases, we have to settle. We're always looking at the most cost-benefit way to do it, because at this point, the child's not even in the school district here, so it's not a matter of -- it becomes not as much a matter of the child, unfortunately, as it does how we can make this work so we're not expending dollars after dollars. So let's talk about the dollars. First, I'd like to propose all the expenditures that we have in our budget. I'm not going to go over all the numbers. I would just like to make sure you understand what you're looking at. Again, you can download the slides and look at them more closely. I've tried to break out the major categories that cost money, and of course, this column, I think, is what you'd be most interested in looking at, what the increases end up being and what we're proposing. You can see salary benefits, special education salary, and special education out-of-district placement take up a lot of those costs. I want to make sure you understand what this means. This asterisk, which refers to the fact that we're drawing funds from capital reserve, means not actually coming out of the operational budget. It's coming out of a reserve fund we have to tend to certain projects, which I'll mention on another slide, like repairing leaky roofs. Teachers who work here in the middle school, especially in the gym. I can see Ms. Washington's head going up and down a little bit. No, we have a problem with some of our roofs, Irving as well, high school. We're trying to make sure we can prevent mold, moisture, and whatnot. There are also funds that we might draw from capital reserve to continue our air conditioning installation project, which we all know is in need. So such things as that. Of course, if you have any other questions about what we'd be using the capital reserve funds for, and I don't answer them, you can either ask them in public comment, or you can always email me, and if I can't answer, I'll defer to Ms. Hofel. I'd like to show you two slides that break the expenditures down into a little more detail. First, to echo the comment I made earlier about the special education out-of-district costs that we incur every year, you should know that since at least the 2016-17 budget, they've gone up drastically every year. One reason why we are able to keep the change at a relatively decent rate, close to $100,000 in just tuition, going into next year is because of this program. One reason is because of the program I referred to, that we'd like to start at Bartle, which would keep some of our students in district, bring back potentially almost a handful of students from out-of-district. I'd also like to show you how salaries have impacted the budget, not only how we have incurred additional expenditures as a result of salaries, but also the savings that I'm proposing as a result of the reductions in force, which I've proposed. I'm not going to read all the reasons. You can see we're increasing salaries because of the annual salary increase that we negotiated with HPEA. The additional increases to staff we've had to make, or will have to make, mostly in special education. Keep in mind, we had to make on the fly relatively sudden changes this year in staffing to accommodate the additional special needs students, which we couldn't project we would be receiving, especially at the early childhood level. I'm talking about higher additional teacher, higher additional powers. That's wrapped up in this number, as well as whatever increases we may have to make going into next year. And the savings to staff, including paraprofessionals, to Bartle Elementary teachers, the high school economics teacher, and several sixth-period compensations equal this number. Now, you're all here mostly because of this, and I respect that, and I need you to know, this is the very, very last thing the Finance Committee and I ever discussed. It's what I get up about early in the morning, worrying about. It's the last thing I ever want to do, and it's what makes me very upset. We'll just leave it at that, and I'm sure we'll be talking more about that in the near future. I want to talk a little bit about revenues before I wrap up my presentation. You have heard that districts like Highland Park receive state aid. It's not consequential. I mean, this looks like a big number. It's far, far short of being fully funded. We're years and years away, and many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars are actually being fully funded by the state. We have been working hard for the last two years, including this proposed budget year, to save $1 million in costs. I review every requisition before it turns into a purchase order that a school leader presents to me, or a teacher might give to a school leader, to verify its necessity, so that I can work closely with Ms. Hofel to be sure that by June 30, we've got $1 million that we didn't need to spend, because we were able to cut costs somewhere this year that we can carry over into next year's budget to offset the tax levy. It's a lot of money. I get a lot from Ms. Hofel about that. I'm worried about it, Scott. I'm worried about it, but if I continue to review those requisitions carefully, I think we'll stay on track to have that fund balance of $1 million. I mentioned the capital reserves earlier. Extraordinary aid is the additional money that the Department of Education gives us in July to offset special education costs. We haven't seen an uptick in it in the last couple of years. It's been hovering around $300,000. I think this year, we've received about $298,000, and then maybe some change. So we're not anticipating additional extraordinary aid. If we're fortunate, we get it in July, great, but we can't assume we're going to get additional extraordinary aid to offset the special needs challenges that we've incurred. And then finally, this is the number of dollars that we are expecting to generate from taxes, from the tax levy. This is the slide that I think most residents find interesting, because those of us who own a home in Highland Park are always wondering how much our taxes are going to go up. You can see with these numbers, if you just look at the last column, particularly the last three rows, I'm sorry, columns, last three columns, last row, the tax levy is going down to its lowest numbers in years, probably not since the Dr. Wood years, when she was superintendent. This is not something that we can control. We can't generate more taxes than what we are restricted to generate. There's a 2% cap, and those of you who know how the formula works with bank cap, we have no more bank cap. We had some bank cap a couple of years ago. I don't believe we had any bank cap going into this year. The only way we're able to -- actually, I'll tell you in a second. The only reason why we're able to generate over 2% is because we can actually get a request to generate more tax revenue to offset health benefit costs, and I'll get to that in a second. But then one thing I'd also like to point out for those residents who might be watching at home or in the audience, the increase for an average home, including ratables, the money that the businesses in the community, in a sense, contribute to the pool of revenue, between that and our 2.73% tax levy with debt service, means that the increase for an average home would be $123. Again, the lowest in at least the last four to five years. This is the reason why we're able to increase the tax levy. We can adjust the money we generate by 9%, more than the 2% because of the health benefits that went up. Again, this is the direction for you to download the slideshow. Right now, while that's up there, is my PDF version of these slides, but there will be more information as it becomes available. And with that, I'd like to sit down and offer the board the option to ask questions. Mark Krieger has lent his support to answer some of those questions if I can't answer them and Ms. Hofel can answer the others. So are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I know one of the comments was that we need to hire additional paras, and I'm wondering if across the board, we've looked at how the paras are being used. I understand--
There wasn't -- no, we're not talking about hiring. Additional paras were hired this year.
Oh, paras were hired this year.
Correct. Like on a kind of as-needed basis for IEPs and other needs, is what.
I thought I heard something different when I listened to this presentation. Thank you.
Do any other board members have specific questions related to the budget? I know it's a lot to absorb on the first go-through.
Yes.
No. I was just agreeing.
The sudden influx of unilateral placements. There's really no strategy we can adopt to discourage that, right, other than litigating aggressively?
You know, if we choose to spend that kind of money.
And I mean, this is something we faced the last two years. Actually, this isn't the first year that we've seen it. This is the second year in a row that we've seen it. And it's one particular attorney. It's a pattern. It happens almost identically, the same way, every year, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the most insidious part about it is it's after we've set our budget. We've set our budget. We think we know what we're looking at for the next year, and then come September, or over the summer, kids enroll, dis-enroll, are placed in out-of-district placements, and then we're sued. And we have to figure out, I mean, with this particular attorney, he's notorious throughout the state. He does not lose in court. He doesn't lose. So you're then left with the choice of, do I go to court and most likely lose? If the district goes to court and loses, we are then on the hook for our own attorney's fees, the student's tuition anyway, and that attorney's fees, and that attorney's fees, let me tell you, are exorbitant. And he has a deal worked out with these private schools, where those parents don't pay a dime in tuition until he gets a settlement from the district. So it's really a scheme. I mean, there's no more polite way to put it than it's a scheme, and it's costing the district hundreds of thousands of dollars a year that we're not anticipating. And I'll talk about this later in my president's report, but I'm working on sitting down with our District 18 legislators about our budget and about the specific challenges that we're facing, and this is one of the things that I want to present to them, that there's got to be some sort of legislative fix for something like this, that a district can't be held accountable for these kinds of situations. Once our budgets are struck, it is not fair to hit a district with hundreds of thousands of dollars in unanticipated expenditures. So, you know, we'll talk a little bit about this later also, but the way it's worked in the charter school law is, if a child comes out of a private school and goes into a charter school, that first year, the state pays the tuition. And that is to kind of give the district a year to figure out their finances and then know you're going to most likely be paying for this kid moving forward. That would help tremendously in these situations. If we had those hundreds of thousands of dollars to hold on to in our budget this year, because we've already figured out where they're going to go, right? But now, all of a sudden, $300,000 is going over there instead of where we thought it was going to go, and then we've got to scramble mid-year to figure out how we're going to make up that difference. It's not, as Dr. Taylor said in his presentation, it's not sustainable. It's just not. So the state has to help us figure this out somehow.
I know we've had long discussions before about whether we should aggressively litigate, and it's always sort of come down, talking with attorneys, and it turns out to be so incredibly expensive--
Yeah, I mean, the attorneys have gone up against this particular attorney before, and no one wins.
The chance we win, but it's very, 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 very small, and the cost is--
Yeah.
And even our own attorney's fees are very, very high. So if we win, we lose.
Yeah.
I would like to add, though, if people are here to hear about the budget, we're looking at just a touch over 2% that we can increase the budget. Now, we have a very fine special ed program that attracts families who want an excellent special ed program. That means that the students come into the district who need this special help, and our budgets go up by all of that much. In years past, the state gave school districts a tremendous amount of help towards special education budgets. When I was first on the school board many, many years ago, we were getting 60% and 70% of the special ed costs back from the state. We're now getting almost nothing. So if we happen to be in a district that has an excellent special education program, we attract families, the state doesn't care. The state is saying, you pay for it, and we have to find the money. And if you look at the slides each year, and the numbers we had to grapple with, we're seeing more young children coming into pre-K, where the hospital or the doctor gives them a diagnosis, so they have to be in a special ed pre-K program, an ABA program. We've had more and more young children coming to us. The state doesn't help us. We pay. The taxpayer pays, but that's limited, and the money has to come from somewhere. So it's incredibly difficult. The state legislature is the place and the way to change this. And I would support and be very positive about working with the legislature to make changes to the way the state is doing funding, because we are not, it's not, as Scott said initially, it's not going to get better, it's only going to get worse.
And we've been trying to, the last couple of years, like to warn that this was coming. Every time we've talked about the budget, we've, you know, it's kind of a balance, right? In the last couple of years, we've had lots of community members upset because we have raised the budget well above the 2% caps. There are lots of districts across the state that got themselves into a different kind of trouble, because they did not either even go to the 2% cap or go over it. We've tried to use every bit of funding that we've had available to us over the last few years to avoid any kind of staffing cuts. We're now at the point where we don't even have that money available. If we could raise it another 1% and keep staff, we would. We don't even have it available to us anymore. It's not an option. We're out of bank cap. We're out of waivers. There's no more money. And we've been trying to say for the past couple of years, like, we're trying to stem the flow as much as we can now, but we're now at that point where there's just nowhere else for the funding to come from. There's just nowhere else.
And one last thing. I just was looking at some of the numbers. Between 2016 and 2019 budgets, the budget we're talking about, the special education out-of-district placements and transportation add up to about $2.25 million. That's the cost to the district. In the proposed budget, it's $3.8 million. So our costs have gone up by about $1.2 million. The state aid for the district over the last 10 years has actually gone down, going back 10 years. That's with inflation. So we would see another million or two if the state actually funded us. They're not funding us.
Right. And the extraordinary aid, that at one point during the budget process, as we were having all of our meetings, I had the intention that I was going to convince Linda that we could increase the amount of extraordinary aid in our budget. We can do it. I know we can. We're going to get more back from the state this year, because the state had said they were going to put more money into extraordinary aid. They knew special education was a problem. They're putting more money there. I went, I looked at the budget. How much extra is going into extraordinary aid this year? For the entire state, $5 million. That's the whole state. The whole state. The legislators are all patting themselves on the back. We're putting more money in extraordinary aid, guys. $5 million for the entire state. $5 million wouldn't help us out of our hole. $5 million wouldn't help any -- $5 million for the entire state is going nowhere. So I understand everyone's frustration. I really, really do. We're unbelievably frustrated, too. We don't want to see any staffing cuts. We don't, but--
Can I just say, and I'm glad that we're pointing out where the true focus is, who the problem really is, and it is the state funding. It's not the fact that there is an increased need. I hear a lot of-- I hear a lot about special education problem and this influx, and as a person in special education, I do think it's, to me, it's, it's very distressing to hear that it's a burden, the increase in the influx, is whatever term we want to call it, of special needs students. So I just want to be, I just want to say that. I think it's important for us to really emphasize the fact is that we're not getting what we need for all of our children, especially children who really need it the most. Not that that's a problem in and of itself, that there is an increased sort of identification process, that's a good thing. We want to know that there are needs out there, and we want to be able to support those children. So placing the emphasis on the fact that we're not getting the funding is the most important part.
Right.
And with the unilateral placements, there is absolutely nothing we can do to stop that from happening. Is that what we're saying at this point?
Yes, that's correct.
That that is, there's no regulation on the books right now that says--
No, they, the state, the state law is written in the way that the district is guilty until proven innocent. The parents have the right, and we have to prove that they're making a mistake in moving their child to an out-of-district placement. But even if we win the case, it costs us as much for that year to pay our own lawyers, not to mention the litigants' lawyers. And the next year, they'll be back. So it's really a situation, our own attorneys have kind of cautioned us not to throw the money away.
And our own attorneys have, have, have experienced the same pattern in other districts. So this attorney who's making these, you know, helping families make these unilateral placements and then hiring him to sue us, we're not the only district he does this in. So our attorneys actually represent the other districts in where this happens, and it's, it's the same pattern, it's the same outcome, it's the same. And other districts with a lot more money to fight that have tried to take a couple of these cases where they think they have a really good case, and to try to fight it, and they lose anyway. And then, like I said, then you're on the hook for your attorney's fees, the tuition anyway, and the other attorney's fees. And we can't do that.
One of, one of the larger commu, local bordering towns fought a case against this, and they paid their lawyer fees, and I believe the number our attorney gave us, because they represent that district, was that the, the litigants' attorney cost $200,000. So they got the, they got the honor of paying like a $50,000 or $60,000 legal fee for their own lawyer, the out-of-district tuition and transportation for the child, which might have been in their district, plus $200,000 to the other team. So it's a, it's a, we have conference calls about this. You know, the Finance Committee and officers of the board have had conference calls with the attorney and with Dr. Taylor, and it's a pretty hopeless situation.
It's a lose-lose.
Right. But as you said, it's time to take it up a notch, right, with the state. Quick question about the $1 million funds transfer, and I'm just not too clear on how sure we can be about that.
We're not 100%--
As Linda said, she's always worried about it.
We're not 100% sure. The thing is that we don't budget down to the bare bone. In other words, you have to have some fund available in case something goes wrong. Everything does go wrong, you know? But we have to have some fund to be fiscally prudent. That fund is about 3% of the budget, which is about, actually, it's, it's under 3% now, but it's about $1 million. That's what's left over in accounts when you add them up. And we budgeted that last year, we were able to bring that forward. The accountant calls it the free balance, and we're going to, we're planning if, if we are left with that million at the end of this year, to move that money over. We barely made it last year, I don't know that we're going to make it this year.
I'm glad you said that, because that would be my next question, what's the track record?
The track record's pretty good, but it's, it's tougher and tougher each year. We just, we were pretty confident, we got three unilateral placements last month that came forward and talked about paying from past September. So we're going to have to pay a year times 65,000, 200,000 is going to go out of that free balance. So we probably will make it, but it's going to be close.
Okay, so if, does anyone else have any?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, the funds drawn from the Capital Reserve going towards the overdue capital improvements and district operations, are those restricted on how they can be used?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
They're restricted to the purposes that have been identified. So if those monies are not used to their full extent, they go back into Capital Reserve at the end of the year.
Okay, but basically, they're usually for capital improvements and for district operations, correct?
Yeah, we have to itemize what they're specifically for in the budget program.
Oh, in the budget program? But we could put those into other categories during the budget?
Right, that's my question, too. During the budget, before May 6th, yes.
Before May 6th. So right now, like, if, so one of the questions I would have going forward is what the capital improvements we're looking at, and what the overdue capital improvements that we're looking at for this, in this budget. And then, just to clarify, I think it's on Slide 7, going back to the paraprofessionals. It's saying that for 2019, 2020, $412,000, and it says staff increases. So--
That was during this year.
So those are staff increases during this year that we're paying for in the next budget?
No, it's next year--
Well, it's in this budget and next budget, right? I mean, if it's in this year's budget, it's got to be moved forward to next year's budget.
These would be areas of increase that we did not budget for this year.
Areas of increase--
That we have to absorb in next year's budget.
Okay.
Because they're here.
This would go back to, like, one of the questions I have, where I'm hearing that paraprofessionals are being used to monitor how the bathrooms are used in the middle school. And I really feel like if paraprofessionals are going to be anywhere, they need to be in the classrooms. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at how effectively we're using our staff within the schools currently as we work on the budget for next year.
So I've directed Susie Budine to meet with all the principals the week of April 1st and April 8th--
Okay.
--to review their schedules and look for all inefficiencies, if there are any, in all the buildings. We're actually going to tear the schedules down and look at them at the very bare basics.
Wonderful.
Okay. I just wanted to throw something out there, I guess. As far as this particular attorney, it's, it's, one, it's not a firm of attorneys, it's one particular attorney--
Correct.
--doing all of this bashing around New Jersey.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. So is there any way that, you know, school districts that are being affected by this one particular attorney would be wise to spend money on a PR firm or some sort of communication to the people who are paying taxes in New Jersey, knowing that, you know, they ultimately are paying for this situation indirectly or not? I just don't know if that's something worth considering.
So, so we've talked to our attorneys, because they're equally frustrated. They go into court, the law is written in a certain way, but also the arbiters of the cases are administrative law judges that are appointed in a, in a certain way, and the cases take a long time. The cases are typically, as I said, between the law and the particular administrative law judges, the school districts don't win. We've talked to some attorneys about this, and there's a work going on behind the scenes with the legislature to change who the actual arbiters are. So that we have arbiters who are, I think they have a slightly different title, but they're, they're also law judges, but law judges who aren't appointed in the same way and who are on fast tracks and who are much more likely, according to the attorneys, to give a much fairer look at each of the cases, one after the other. And also not accept these gigantic law fees, so that you don't want to, you don't want to, you don't want to fight the suit because you might find yourself paying $200,000 of this inflated bill. If that happens, and again, that'll be through the legislature, if that happens, the school districts will have a much more fair case in the court system. That's the only thing that's going on right now, but that may make a big difference, they tell us.
My question was, you know, clearly legislatively, something needs to change, but in order to get that legislative move, sometimes there needs to be a grassroots push. So that was what my question was about, was more or less--
I think it would be difficult to go, like, you know, hunting around to figure out where, I don't--
No, it would probably be impossible. I just didn't know if that was something that--
I think the New Jersey bar is taking this up, is what I'm saying. The New Jersey bar is taking it up because they're so frustrated by this--
And they're making money. Right?
The hope is that the, there'll be some change in the process, at least a pilot. I mean, my understanding is that there's a pilot in the works. And I don't know if it's actually legislative change or if it's a regulatory change--
I'm not sure which--
--that makes it. I believe it's regulatory, but I'll, I'll find out more. That would implement this pilot, so the process isn't so arduous, time-consuming, expensive, all those things, so that the process goes a lot faster, and it's heard by people who actually have some expertise in special education, not just by random administrative law judges that are, you know, govern, you know, gubernatorial appointees and like a hot mess. So, so I'm hopeful about that, and we'll certainly speak when, you know, we'll put that on our list of things to speak to our legislators about.
Yeah.
I wish I could be more, as optimistic as you sound. I'm, I'm not particularly optimistic. I mean, this is something that we have been dealing with, it's something that has been ongoing for years and is continuing, and we have to deal with it now. And that's one of the reasons that we're where we are now.
Well, to do any kind of advocacy work, you have to be able to maintain some sort of, you know, like, we can do this kind of attitude. Because if you didn't, you'd just walk out the door and go home and pull the covers over your head. You know, like, you have to, like, you have to think, okay, if, you know, if we can make this argument, and if we can get enough momentum behind it, and it makes sense, we can make that change, so--
There was one thing, I wonder if, Scott, you had mentioned, you know, we've cut to bare bones, and, and I was part of that process, and I saw it on a number of those evenings and in phone calls, et cetera. But the one thing that you did mention was we need to get to a place where we are actually working on increasing revenues. And I wonder if you could explain to the folks what some of those ideas might be, or some areas that we might be able to go, that perhaps other districts are doing, that were maybe creative new ways where we could start to look at potentially generating some new revenue.
So two initial thoughts I have are to pull in more international students who can bring with them tuition upwards of about $20,000 or around. It's, there's this tuitionary established by the State Department, US State Department. We have two students in our high school this past year who we get, we did bring in from China, I'd like to tap that, that, that opportunity. There's, there's more we can do, I think, in that area. And I also like, the second idea I have is to consider building, expanding on our special ed program that we are looking to start at Barnum. It's a therapeutic behavior program, support program. And not that we have all the space in the world with which to deal, but even if it meant perhaps looking at other spaces to lease and building our own receiving program of sorts to not only bring students back from out of district, which, by the way, would save expenditures, on expenditures, but also bring in tuition students. Susie Budine tells me that, our Director of Ed Services, she gets emails every month from school districts in our neck of the woods looking for other school districts who have a program to receive their students. A lot of those programs that they're looking for have to do with the behavior support program that we're building at Barnum. So I see that program, if it, if it's something that the board approves, as being a pilot, and if it works, perhaps we can expand that. You're talking about tuition-paying students at a rate of about $40,000 a student from other districts. You're talking about saving money from those, with those students who we would bring back in district. I mean, if I could find 1.2 million, roughly, $1.2 million in revenue, I will not have to be at the place at which I'm at right now. So those are some initial thoughts. I've told the board, the Finance Committee in particular, this is my mission, it has to start as soon as I can, you know, before the summer comes by my way, so that I can hit this project, make it a high priority project, so by December, I have some real concrete ideas. So those are just two I have for now.
And Scott, you said that Susie was coming, at which meeting?
April 15th.
April 15th, she'll come to talk specifically about that program--
Correct.
--and the kind of nuts and bolts of that.
And I tell you what, I'll also ask her to expand on my idea and see if there's actually some traction there. You know, and obviously, you can ask her questions. Hey, what might this look like in 2020, 2021?
Okay. Okay. So if board members don't have additional questions, I'd like to propose that we kind of reconfigure the agenda a bit. I should have thought about this when Scott and I were putting together the agenda, that we move a public comment now, specifically just on the budget--
Yep.
--and any budget concerns. Y'all don't have to sit here and watch us go through our entire report, as exciting as we are. But I want to give you the opportunity, you know, you guys took the time to come out here, so I want you to not have to sit through all of our boring business and have the opportunity to, to speak with, with us now. So if it's okay with everybody, I'm going to propose that we move a public comment section up to, I guess it would be Item 10, right? Because we're moving it up, or it would replace 11, right?
We have to go back to all this.
Oh, 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 right, right, right.
This is not a budget hearing. This is a formal budget hearing.
Right.
You don't have to do one or the other, but it's your decision.
Say that again?
It's your decision on whether you want the board to take action, which is the next item on the agenda, or interrupt the action. It's the only action I will mention.
Okay, but can we, we can have public comment first and then do the action? Yeah. So why don't we do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So--
Just going to suggest it.
Wait, but wait, I need to look at what number. So those would be approvals--
Interrupting 10A1.
Yes, that's public. Number 12, way in the back.
It'll be 11, and this budget will be 11, 1.
Okay.
The whole number is 11.
Okay, so we'll do that. Is that okay? Sorry. I'd love to change all those numbers. Okay, so we're going to make a public comment session now. So if you would like to make a public comment, please make your way up to the podium, and please, if you're a resident, you can say your name and address for the record so that the Board Secretary can record that. If you're staff, you can say that you're staff.
Tara Canavera, 361 C. Crowes Road, Highland Park, New Jersey. If we have to cut staff and riff anybody, I would prefer it to be one of our 12 administrators rather than classroom staff. As it is, we have struggling learners who have not qualified for an IEP in a classroom with 23 students and one teacher, no para. That student is going to continue to struggle until he becomes a student who's eligible for an IEP and cost us more money. Sorry, I'm not feeling well tonight. So instead of cutting paras and teachers, which we need, we need to get rid of administrators. We have less than 2,000 students and 12 administrators. That's a little much. So if anybody needs to be riffed, it should be one of them, not one of these people. Thank you.
My name is Terry Mitchell, and I'm the Family Consumer Science teacher for the high school. First, I would like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to teach and work with your students for the past 17 years. It's been a privilege and a delight to be here. I had no intentions of speaking or opposing your decision to the Family Consumer Science program when I met with Principal Lassiter or Superintendent Teller. As you recall, my final words was, were, "It's cool with me if that's the best you can do." Because I knew, being, having the experience that I do, I will go somewhere else and do what I do, because I love what I do. So, but what happened during Period 4 today, a student entered my classroom enthusiastically yelled out, "Guess what I did this weekend?" And I looked at this student, and knowing what we had been working with, I looked at him and I said, "You made the pizza." He said proudly, "I made the pizza, and it was delicious. I'm going to keep that recipe so I can repeat it and do it again." At that point, I stopped because I knew I needed to speak up for a program that is so much more than home economics. At that point, I realized I had given a student an opportunity that he would not have had It was more than just-- It was more than just creating a pizza because we, that's what I do. I do that all the time. But Family Consumer Science gave him the opportunity to create, to develop, and produce a product that he could be proud of. That's what Family Consumer Science is really all about. It's giving our students the opportunity to use their imaginations to create and develop a product for which they can be proud of and use that recipe over and over again so that they can create a life and a world that they can be proud of. These are the skills that they will, that will prepare them for their future. And I'm proud to say they get it in Family and Consumer Science. And as far as the paras, I want to give you a story. Over the summer, I was over there on Route One by Michael's. A former student of ours came up to me and she shared with me her frustrations of not getting the support she needed to be successful in college. After several unsuccessful attempts, she dropped out of college. This is not the outcome we want for our students. Paras provide an invaluable service and support to our students and our school. Please protect their positions and allow them to assist our students to be successful. So to that end, I'm asking you to do what I do in Family Consumer Science. Go back and use your imagination and come up with a better budget that can have a long-term positive impact on our school and our students and everyone can be proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. That was beautifully said. And I'm very grateful for what you were able to offer to that student. Thank you. Is there any other public comment specifically on the budget?
Good evening. My name is Keith Presti, President of the Highland Park Education Association. I will be speaking on behalf of the association and our 250 members in response to tonight's budget, proposed budget presentation. The association is saddened and frustrated to hear that the board's 2019-20 school budget will include layoffs of teachers, paraprofessionals, and programs, all of which have a direct negative impact on the students we love and serve. We recognize the board faces many challenges when constructing and balancing its yearly school budgets. We are sure the board did not come to these reductions in force lightly, and we respect that. However, the association is adamantly opposed to any budgetary cuts that remove teachers from the classrooms, increase class sizes, reduce the number of educational support professionals, or reduce and eliminate programs for our students. This district currently employs the highest number of administrators that we have ever had. In times of hardship, we must work together, plan together, and sacrifice together. The association would like to know what process was instituted to investigate the necessity for the large number of administrative positions recently added to our district. While we do not wish to single out individuals, the hard facts are that the board has had to do that with our members. We now have individuals losing jobs without any other means of staying in this district. Only equitable sacrifices ensure that we are doing what is best for the students and the staff. Increasing class sizes by reducing classroom teachers is not the best we can do for our students. It is, in fact, worst practice. Administrative cuts do not have the same direct day-to-day classroom impact as cramming more kids into the classroom and removing programs that teach essential life skills. We urge the board to go back to the table and find cuts that better balance and reduce the impact to our students, their education, and the lives of our hard-working teachers and paraprofessionals. We are optimistic and confident that the board can make the necessary adjustments to accommodate next year's school budget without firing teachers, paraprofessionals, or cutting programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Presti. Is there any other public comment on the budget? Did Keith take it?
Darah Botfenik, 348 Becker Street in Highland Park. I just want to say I'm a sixth-grade English teacher here, as you guys know, and I know this is a very hard situation for everyone. I really want to speak about the educational fidelity of having more students in a classroom and say that that really scares me. In my experience, there is an incredible difference between having even 22 students in a class versus 18, between having 28 and 22. The experience in that classroom, no matter how hard we work, is so immediate and direct on students. And as students get exposed to more, I don't know, just more media, more social media, our lives and work and energies are different in the classroom and we have different struggles, I really question the idea of cutting staff as a way of saving funds because it will ultimately hurt the children to such a degree. And I am very, very concerned about that, and I really do support our wonderful colleagues. And I just wanted to speak up to the class size as a severe issue that I think you should reconsider. Thank you.
Dr. Taylor, do you want to speak to the class size piece?
Actually, I'll make two points. One, we looked at the projected class sizes at Barnum, where the two cuts I think are most going to impact class size. We are projecting in grades two and five, class sizes of 20 in a class if we keep it at six sections. What we're proposing is we reduce the six sections to five sections. The class sizes would average 24 in a class. Ms. Botfenik, I recognize that smaller classes are obviously optimal. We felt, however, that the 24 was an appropriate class size at that grade level. The other point I'd like to make, actually clarify something that Mr. Presti said. Regarding administration, I, I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me right away, but it's just a click away. I did a review of the number of administrators that we have had in our district over the last, well, since 2011. We're actually at the same numbers right now, which is 13, not 12, that we were at in 2013, 14, 2012, 2013. Keep in mind, we have many more students now than we did back then. We saw a drastic dip in our admin staff when Mr. Capone was here. That was 2014, 15, we were down to nine. When I came on board, I surveyed staff and I wanted to get a sense of what they felt was important for them, to support them. And obviously, the majority felt it was important for us to have supervisors, people who are content area experts in their field, to conduct workshops and whatnot. So that was our rationale. But I just need to clarify the numbers. We're at 13 right now, same numbers we were at back in 12, 13, 13, 14.
And I think it's also important to note that the additional administrators that have been added is an additional layer in special education. So there's a Director of Special Education and a Supervisor of Special Education because of the growth in that program and because of the, everything that falls underneath that umbrella. It's homeless students, which we've also seen a dramatic increase in our homeless students, and those students need to be tracked from where they go homeless, which is from here to wherever they go. So that's another increase that we've talked about in the last couple of years, is the increase in our homeless students and the transportation for those homeless students. We either have to pay the transportation for those students to go from where they are back here, or we have to pay for where the students are now. And that, last year, I think that was 13 or 14 students, I don't remember the number this year, but it's, that has been substantially growing as well. So that falls under that department. ESL falls under that department. Nursing falls under that department. So that was a lot for one person to handle, so there are now two administrators for special education.
And the other additions that were made were the Assistant Principal of the High School, that was a necessity out of concerns regarding safety and security. I think the high school teachers would agree that that's been a really pivotal part of the management of the building. And also keep in mind that we were at a point at which, before I came on board, you had multiple assistant superintendents. We have decentralized to an extent, the administrative structure. So now you have more boots on the ground. You have supervisors who are in classrooms, supporting teachers directly, working more for the kids than I believe was the past when you had a, you had a database and central office-level database administrator, you had two assistant superintendents. Yeah, we've been trying to shift the responsibility of the leaders in the district to helping the teachers, not to helping me or the central office. I just need to point that out, too.
And I mean, you can ask Dr. Taylor, any conversation we've ever had about budget that gets to class size, there's no one shouting in the room louder than me about class size and how important it is and how that is, based on any research you want to read.
That's true.
That is the thing you don't want to mess with. And we do, we look at all of, I mean, this isn't the best rationale, I'm not going to say it is, but we look at all of the other districts in our county and they're no different. We're consistently, particularly at the Barnum, in elementary, at the Irving and Barnum level, the smallest class sizes in the county. And there are two amazing things that we do for our kids, right? We have free half-day pre-K. Nobody else has that. It's absolutely amazing. We have full-day kindergarten. We've had full-day kindergarten far longer than anybody else ever had full pre-day, full, full-day kindergarten. We've had it longer, we've maintained it longer. We don't want to touch those. That gives our kids this amazing head start that so many other kids do not get.
And our.
We're going places we don't want to go. We hear you. We absolutely hear you. I don't want to go here either. I don't.
Our class sizes are projected in kindergarten or first grade next year to be 18 in a class. And those kids, obviously, will move up to Barnum. And so we're still projecting classes of no more than 24, except of course if students push in, special needs students push in in the afternoon, usually is the case for science and social studies at Barnum. But then there'll be in-class support teachers, so there are always two teachers teaching in a class, which I may have an additional three, four, or five students.
Okay, is there any additional public comment on the budget?
Hi, I wasn't going to speak, but I've been sitting here thinking about.
Please, I'm sorry, just make sure you state your name for that. That's okay.
Deirdre McInerney Leo, 406 South Second Avenue. I teach ESL at Barnum School. My two sons went through this school system and my daughter's in it now. And over the years, since my daughter was three, in early intervention ed here, the paraprofessionals have made a huge difference in her life. In each classroom, when you've got a bunch of little kids, many of whom have special needs, that paraprofessional is so key. And I've pushed in as an ESL teacher and seen the paraprofessionals working with these kids. And then I see with my students, the paraprofessionals learn their names, take care of them in after-school, work all the hours that our district gives them for all the evening program that Jen Knapp, who is a very busy administrator, arranges. Jules Soroka is always there. Like, our paraprofessionals earn not much money and make a tremendous difference in our district.
I'd like to make one thing clear about this. We are not going to be eliminating paraprofessional positions that are required for students who have IEPs. They're called for such. We can't do that. That'd be violating an IEP. What I'm talking about doing is finding, looking back at the last two years in which we've hired, I believe, 16 additional paraprofessionals just in two years alone, and determining if, in fact, we were just scrambling to help those kids as fast as we could, expeditiously as we could, by hiring paraprofessionals before having the chance to put the brakes on the schedule and say, okay, let's revamp the schedule. Let's take a look at how we can keep all of our paras who our kids need, but just do it in a more efficient manner. So, I mean, we need to be clear on this, that we're not talking about eliminating paraprofessionals who our kids need. They're still going to have those paraprofessionals.
Right, not taking them out of kindergarten classrooms.
Absolutely not. No.
Julia Dewhurst, 188 Dartmouth Street, staff alumni, once a para, had a para, was a parent of a special needs child that went through, who cost you guys a lot of money, and I appreciate it every day because she is blossoming. I actually did want to talk about Terry Mitchell, just that class. I was thinking about it from the standpoint of where my daughter is now. And I think we're kind of forgetting, sorry. There is a vocational piece to that program. That is pretty much the only vocational piece that we have going on at this high school. So you're talking about special education and our numbers and what it costs, and I appreciate that. I know how much Rachel costs this town and I'm thankful for it. I just want to think, if we're thinking about expanding programs, it would be interesting to look more now at life skills, as I see our glow students going into that program and learning how to turn on an oven, how to cook. There are other pieces that could be brought into that program as well with life skills. And sometimes you'd just have to look long-range. And while I hate to bring up Mr. Capone's name, it's not, we're not so far in a different position than we were five years ago. I sat at that budget meeting and we kind of saw this big looming death cloud coming. And it's just sad that none of us, you know, as a whole, could really see that we'd be here. And to hear Terry and to see her, the love that you give some of the most challenging students every day, those with IEPs, those without IEPs, if you came in and saw, you know, really, the amazing job she does with all of our kids, you know, I really would like to think of her as just a school mom, like we all are, but she just does a great job. And it's sad to me that we can't maybe look at that and turn it around. And I understand it's dollars and cents. I know we are at a huge shortfall, but, and maybe it's an antiquated program. I know the stoves cost money, the food costs, it's a big nut to carry. I do understand the math. But if we could look at it differently and maybe get involved with some other people looking at vocational things for our special need population in this town and blowing it up into another program, maybe that would be something for that. That's it. I just, I really appreciate all you do. I'm just, really sad for me, having now worked here and graduated and these babies and all of you. It's just sad.
Thank you, Julia. Can we make sure if there's anybody else who wants to speak? Darah, before you come up, is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay, if no one else is going to make public comment, Tara, please come back up.
Just thank you for talking about the class size. I just want to go back to that for one second and say that I don't think we're yet meeting the needs of all our students in the district. I don't think, I think we still have a strong achievement gap, as do many of us in the nation, and we're all trying so hard to remedy that. But I do see a big difference in class size between 24 and 20. And who would get hurt in that particular number game? And I also want to say that every year I'm here, we get new students. And so it starts at 24. Does that number include the increase in students that will?
It does. We do look at that, absolutely. We've had Mr. Benjamin lay out the class sizes as they go through the year.
As they go through the year. Okay, that was one of my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, because it's like a balancing game, right? If we get students, we lose students, so.
Right, okay.
And we'd have to make sure as students are going in, not too many are going into any one particular room, and it would be balanced based on where kids are. Because that's, with our overall enrollment concerns about the district, we look at this kind of at a more like macro level, every month, actually, to see how many kids we lose in the district every month and how many kids we gain. So we have like a role, and we look at it longitudinally as well, like how many kids did we have this time of year, last year, and two years ago? So we're constantly assessing that. So we have, we have looked at that, just to reassure you a little bit. I understand that fear of like, well, great, you start with 24, but then are you going to end the year with 27?
Right, I do, I do understand.
And I'm concerned about the class sizes at the middle school. I'm concerned about them everywhere. You've got my kid in one of the biggest classes, so I'm constantly there like, my kid's in the biggest Spanish class with Ms. G and Ms. G's doing a great job, but it's not fair, you know? So trust me, like, we see it, our kids are living it. These are not. it. Like, these are not decisions anybody, you know, I can, I'm just a broken record. I'm sorry.
No, I just, I want to kind of point out what I think is the elephant in the room, which is I think the students who are coming in with super high skills are, it's not that they wouldn't do better in a smaller classroom. I think, I think they would. But I think our skills fragile students are extremely vulnerable in this situation. I just wanted to bring that up.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I just say quickly something? I feel like it's very clear that we're all working on the same goals. We're all on the same page. It doesn't, it doesn't seem that there's an adversarial feeling in the room. You know, there's no bad guy. But there, there certainly is a bad guy in the state as it is budget-wise. And I think that, you know, for whatever it's worth, like personally, I feel like I want to give support to any kind of push that might be happening at the state level to get the money that our kids deserve.
Right. Well, and I was going to talk about this under my president's report, but it makes more sense, I guess, to kind of move some of this now. That, one of the things we were talking about doing was trying to get to a Senate Budget Committee hearing this week. But between Mr. Krieger's schedule and my schedule and Dr. Taylor's schedule, we can't make it work this Thursday. But there is a Senate Budget Committee hearing, and we were going to try to get to that. But unfortunately, we won't be able to get to that. So I did reach out today to the Chief of Staff for Senator Diagnan, and asked him if we could set up a meeting between myself, Mr. Krieger, Dr. Taylor, Linda, anybody else who, you know, anybody else who wants to come. So we can point out to them the problems that we're facing. I got an email just last week from one of our assemblymen, Robert Karabincheck, you know, congrat, I'm sorry, not congratulating us, congratulating himself really, saying, you know, you got all this extra money this year. Isn't it great? No, no, it's not. You know, it was kind of this like, we're doing a great job for you guys in Trenton. Look, we got all this extra money. No, we didn't get all this extra money. So Dr. Taylor put that 180-something thousand dollars, that was our additional aid from the state. What was it, Linda? Close to 40 of that went straight to the charter schools. And we actually lost, we actually lost, this burned me in a way I can't even tell you. We lost $40,000 in pre-K aid. I'm sorry, what? The governor is going around touting that there's more money for pre-K? We lost money for pre-K. So these programs that we're desperately trying to keep alive because we know how important they are for our kids, to give them that amazing, because right, that's the other research, you know, proven research, you know? Start them early. The earlier you get them in the door, the better they're going to do. So which end of that do we pull from? Do we pull away from the early childhood end that's research-based? Or do we pull away from the class size that's research-based? They both, I wanted to use a bad word there, and I didn't. I stopped myself. They're both bad choices. We're, we're now, we're choosing between the bad choices. Which is, which is the least bad of the bad choices that we have to make? So that $180,000, just kind of erase that out of your mind. Make that like 100. And then we all have to remind ourselves that we're getting less money than we got 10 years ago from the state. So any extra money that we've gotten, come, any staff members who got up here and said, I live here, thank you so much, because you're paying for that too. So, you know, thanks to the state, you're not only making less money than you made a few years ago, you're paying more in taxes for the privilege. So, I'm married to a teacher. I feel the frustration, right? I'm paying more in taxes, too. My husband's bringing home lesson is paycheck. It all stinks. So if you guys go out and walk and picket somewhere, I'll be right there with you.
Call us.
Because, you know, like, we hear you. We hear you. It's totally go time. Like, there's, there's nowhere else to go with this. So, we're going to set up, set up this meeting with our senator and our two assembly people. We're going to try to get our, our, you know, piece in before they settle on the budget. Senator Diagnan is on the Budget Committee, so he has, you know, maybe some tiny little bit of sway in this. Middlesex County, we're a rising power in the state now, right? The Speaker of the Assembly is a, Nancy just, ha-ha, like, chuckled in the back. But, you know, we, maybe we've got a little bit of juice, maybe we can do something. We will try to do whatever we can legislative, legislatively to get more money in here. Maybe some additional extraordinary aid money is going to come in, and it won't be as dire as it seems. But we can't, we can't count on any of that. We can't bank on any of that money. We just can't. What else did I want to say on that other part? I think maybe that was it. Oh, you know, I kind of mentioned the part of, you know, we understand that as teachers, it's been exceedingly hard over the last, you know, from the beginning of the Christie administration on forward. And when the board negotiated with the union, we felt it was really important that you guys got that decent increase. It, it, it still doesn't even make the dent, right? I mean, it still doesn't help with the rising, how much you guys pay into your health insurance. It helps, but it doesn't help. You're still, a bunch of you are probably still underwater. But it makes the budget that much harder to balance, right? Now we can only go up, you know, two and a scooch percent, but everything else goes up 3% or higher. So we're just, we're caught. We want to do the right thing by you guys. We don't want you to continue to suffer every, you know, month in your paycheck. But then there's just that much less money. So it's, we're caught. We're really caught. But please know that we are trying, and we hear you. We absolutely hear you. So, that's what I have to say about that.
And I would also say what Julia said before she left, that she, she was sad about this. I want to assure everyone, we, none of us ran for the Board of Education to give you a budget like this, with cuts like these. That's so bare bones. It's, it just makes me sad also. I mean, I've lived here a long time. My two children both went to all of that, through the Highland Park school system. And, and it's a great school system. And, and these kinds of cuts that we've had to make are just terrible. And so we feel the pain, and we're not happy. And we sat through many meetings with large notebooks going over number after number to see what we could possibly do. And it's simply, we're simply between a rock and a hard place. Some of the numbers have to go up, and then we can't raise, we can't raise the taxes. It's a terrible, terrible position. But we've done the best we can.
And I do want to point out one additional thing, which is, you know, I don't want anyone to think that the, the Home Economics Program was put on the chopping block because we think it's antiquated or not worthwhile. One of the things that we did discuss, and actually, you know, anybody who knows me knows that one of the things my kid likes the best in this world is baking. And she was really looking, anyone who knows my kid is not in their head like, oh yeah, we've had that cake, it's pretty good. That was one of the things she was looking forward to the most. But one of the things that we do realize is also at our disposal as members of Middlesex County is the vocational technical programs that are offered in the county. And we do have some students who take advantage of those programs. And we do have buses that already go to those programs. So one of the things that we're thinking we can do is to continue to figure out ways that we can, that we can offer those opportunities to additional students. Because there are, there are those kinds of programs, and I think at least two of the Middlesex County Vo-Tech programs. So that's a way that we can take advantage of our county tax dollars that we're all, all already paying, and those programs are out there and available. So we're hoping to also look into how we can get some of our students who would be interested in those kind of programs to explore the options that they have there as well. So, okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Uh, well, you can go up to the podium. And then we are going to have to finish up with public comment.
I have two questions. One is, are these cuts that you're proposing going to prevent us from sitting here a year from now, looking at some other beloved program on the chopping block? And the other question is, how do you propose that we increase the revenue through international students? Like, what are the steps? Do we have a plan for this?
So regarding your latter question, there are so many organizations that pitch their services to bring kids over to us, to us, that many of which to me don't, are not credible. They come to us, they say, yeah, I've got these kids, and then they never show up again, or they never follow up. So it's incumbent upon, I'm going to take personal responsibility upon, to do this. Again, incumbent upon me to reach out to my colleagues and find the places that are truly working for their districts, and then go there. And we're one of the few high schools that has been deemed by the U.S. State Department able to accept J-1 and F-1 visa students. So there are not a lot of high schools like us out there. Not a huge pool of students, of schools. Rutgers Prep is doing a great job. They generate millions of dollars in revenue just off the backs of, of international students. They have a dean for recruitment, which we're not going there, obviously. We're not going to do that. I'll be the dean of recruitment in our school district, who just flies everywhere, and I'll plan on flying everywhere. I'll have to make a lot of calls and do Skyping, whatever it takes to get these kids in. This is all so preliminary for me. So I've got to, now that I'm done with this preliminary budget, now I've got to go to the next phase. And to your other question, the way we're going to stave off additional cuts is, one, generate revenue. Two, perhaps we'll be in a better place with special education out of district costs next year. We won't get three to five year lateral replacements like we did this year, which was costing at least $150,000 alone. Hopefully, things will be better. We're not counting on that. That's why it comes back to revenue.
Okay. So we're going to close public comment for now. Linda will move with, I'm sorry?
Item 12.
I'm sorry? Now we're at item 12?
Now 12.
Okay. And that is, let me make sure. So if you guys want to skedaddle, thank you very much for coming, and we appreciate you taking part in the conversation. We truly do.
So, Linda, last year we asked her to bring more, more, and she said, back in 2009, 40, we have 100. And I'm, those numbers aren't exactly right, but it's a year.
It's a birthday.
No, no. Any place they seem to need some extra, like hole monitors, whatever, that's why we're, let's get a para. And so Scott's going to get the people together. Scott's going to get his team together. And he's going to say to them, I want, I want accounting with all of this. And I said to him, look, you need to find three or four or six, he's not sure yet, budget, how many, based on medical insurance. Some of them, you know, most of them, medical insurance is more than.
So now 12, 1 through 5?
He said, he said that, he's going to just say, I want to know the numbers, because they don't need eight.
It's confusing.
Also, we haven't had a chance, this wasn't the right time.
It was just confusing to be in one. Okay, so we are going to, can I get a motion to approve items 12? So now, what's on your agenda as 10A, 1 through 5? We're now realizing there was really no reason for the A, because there wasn't a B. So it's items 12, 1 through 5 is what we'll be moving, which is the authorization to submit the school district budget, approval of the adjustment to the tax levy waiver, approval of withdrawal from capital reserve, approval of withdrawal from maintenance reserve, and approval of amendment to long-range facilities plan. And just-
So we're moving these tonight?
Yeah.
We need to submit these to the County Board of Education.
Oh, that's part of the-
Right, right. But it's the preliminary budget.
Right, right, right. Got it.
So it doesn't mean that we're 100% locked in.
Should I move this?
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Do we want to have any discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion? Sorry, I thought we just had a ton of discussion, but I should ask again. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
When are we going to present the computer leasing program? Do we have a schedule for talking about that? Which, someone brought up in the previous comments about the underserved students. And this, you know, that came out of the board initiative to do something about homework and computers. So I just wondered when we, when we plan to talk about that.
Well, maybe the best-
I believe the best opportunity would be April 15th, because that's when we're going to talk about the one-to-one initiative.
Terrific, thank you. That's what I meant, yes. Thanks, Scott.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. We've asked if there's any discussion. Karen, I'm sorry, we made you confused.
Just one, one of the things I saw there was number five, or whatever, was the track resurfacing? And I guess this goes back to the, I'm trying to understand that, the track is ours, correct? And the turf on the inside is the-
No, none of it's, none of it's ours. It's all, it all is under a 99-year lease to the town, to the borough. And the reason for that is that was the way we were able to fund the track and the inner football, you know, the playing field surface. We were able to fund that through 50% from the county, 25% from the town, and 25% from the school district, 10 years ago or whenever. So we're going back to the county. The town is going back to the county with our help, trying to get 50% of the approximately, I'm guessing, Linda, 750,000 for both parts, to get a new track and a new field. We'll pay a quarter, the town will pay a quarter, and the county will pay half. We're not guaranteed that this will fly. We're not guaranteed they have the money. We're not guaranteed they want to give us the money. But we have to put it in this budget. Otherwise, we're not eligible to move the money from capital reserve into the budget. So we have to move it from capital reserve into the budget. Otherwise, we can't spend the money from capital reserve if they do come forward with the money.
And it needs to be done.
And it needs to be done. It's long overdue to do both of those things.
And then it's the other thing, this thing that Linda said before, that if we don't spend that money for whatever reason next year, then it can be moved back. But it's got to be earmarked now, so it can be moved. And then if we don't use it, it can-
And it has to be capital, and it's not coming from taxes.
Right. Makes sense?
Sort of.
Okay.
See me, see me later if you have questions.
Okay. If there isn't anything else. Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselevich?
Yes.
Mr. Whiten?
Yes.
Okay, so we will now go through our committee reports. Michelle, you want to start us off with curriculum and instruction, please?
Sure. So we had a short meeting, Monique and myself and Dr. Taylor. And we spoke about the, you know what, now I'm looking at my notes, it was March 6th. Is that the right meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. It just seems like so long ago. So much has happened.
Really?
So we talked about the, the health program that was actually originally from Avery's suggestion, to provide something of substance to the seniors, outgoing students in the senior class, to provide some health education to fill the gap from the years that were insufficient. So that was our first item that we discussed, and that's in the works. Not too sure about a timeline or a schedule for that, but that is in the works. Next, we discussed the research on in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and some proposed ideas concerning both. And the middle school summer math program, we did get an update about that. I don't know if you recall, but last year, we had several students who were incoming seventh graders, I believe, who were given the opportunity to take geometry due to the first-come, first-served nature of the additional summer math course that was offered. So that was through Title I funds. And its intent was to catch up students who were falling behind in math. So, you know, research tells us that. By the time a student is in eighth grade, they should be taking Algebra I in order to prepare themselves for high school, college-level science and math-type academic work. If they are not at that level by eighth grade, they will be at a disadvantage and will have to double up on math at some point in their high school program. So the intention was to catch up students, to, to prepare them for that eighth-grade algebra. Unfortunately, what happened was there were several students that were taking algebra already as sixth, right, algebra as sixth graders. And then they were able to take geometry, because they did take that summer course. And there were a limited amount of spaces at first. And then we were able to find additional spaces for any other students who were interested. So, long story short, we wanted to revisit that procedure. And so it is math support, the new label, not enrichment. the new label, not enrichment. It will be no longer available to wave into any math class, I'm sorry. It will be marketed, you know, that, or communicated, that you can wave into any math class and you can have the opportunity to take that math class, just because you feel that you are ready. So it's not contingent upon taking a paid-for summer course and presenting proof that you have paid for that summer course and therefore belong in that math program. So if you are able to wave into it, that affords more access, we believe. Also, we talked about identifying students that could benefit the most from this program and offering it to them in a primary fashion and then secondarily to other students. And Dr. Taylor mentioned that he would use the Honeywell system email as well as a paper-letter type advertisements to all families that are, you know, have students that are able to take this course. So that was our committee meeting. Number two, item number two on the agenda is a resolution to approve the field trips. Number three is a resolution to approve the HIB incident report for the month of January 2019, and there is just one. Resolution to approve, number four, resolution to approve the 1920 district calendar for the 1920 school year as attached. And number five is a resolution to approve the following new course for the high school. And that looks like it says English II with honors option. That should read English XI with honors option.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like, I don't know...
I'm sure it's not English LL.
Yeah. No, it's not.
With the history one that we did, wasn't that History II?
It was U.S. History II, but it was offered for grades 10, right? It was grade 10?
Yes, I think so.
Let me verify that.
It was grade 10.
So this is English grade 11 with honors option.
Fine.
So confusing.
It's a little confusing, yeah. Does anyone have questions?
So that means we don't have a separate honors English 11 course?
Currently.
We don't currently have it, or we're not going to have it next year?
No, that we will.
We will not have one. We will have a honors option and not a separate class.
That's right.
Okay. I'm starting to understand.
In both sections.
So it would be AP and this?
AP and then this.
Two sections.
Correct. Those are the two options.
And as far as I understand, it should be, this is our intention, is to present it as an option that anyone can succeed. You know, they shouldn't expect to get a B if they take the honors option. They shouldn't expect to be miserable and like, under piles of homework. They should expect to succeed. So that is our intention.
Right. Those are people who have, are signing up to do additional work to get the...
That's right.
To qualify for the honors designation.
Right. And so our intention is to encourage students, not to scare them away from taking that option.
I do want to clarify, the U.S. II program is for juniors. Freshmen take World History. Sophomores take U.S. II, oh, U.S. I, and then juniors take U.S. II.
Oh, sorry.
So we'll have two junior-level honors option courses in our humanities program. So basically, our whole junior humanities program will now be honors option. That's the idea.
It would be nice at the end of the year to get another presentation from the teachers who are, who are running those classes, to see how things are going and look at that, look at those data again.
If we could make sure to hear from the students as well about their experiences.
Yeah, that's kind of how it was presented last time.
Yes.
Like, both from the student perspective.
Right. Yeah, that was useful. I thought that was great.
I do recall at the end of the first year of the History II with honors option, hearing a spattering of negative and positive reports, both from the teachers and from the students, including the, that some of the teachers felt that they needed additional professional development for the purposes of teaching such a mixed-use class. And I'm wondering if we've looked at the cost analysis between having, having, rather than having two separate classes, the, what the cost is looking like having one combined class with professional development versus having two separate classes?
I think the class sizes would be exorbitant. I could pull them up now, what they are currently combining them. You could be talking 30 to 40 students in a class. That's my assumption.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Not so much that, but what we're looking at, we need to provide professional development to the teachers who are teaching that course with the honors option.
We always have to provide professional development.
It seems like additional professional development was needed.
Additional professional development. What the cost is, additional professional development.
But it's not additional, it's just specific. It's not like they get this professional development and then on top of that, they have to get this. It's saying, "Have this be my professional development."
Okay. So I'm wondering what the cost of that specific professional development for those teachers who are going to be teaching the combined class versus the cost to the district of just having these two separate classes?
I mean, they're getting the PD anyway. The idea is not going to be an increased cost. But I mean, I think there might be a question about whether we should be springing for perhaps more focused, PD differentiation is such a huge...
Because the history teachers said that they would like to have had professional development, specifically in teaching mixed-use classes.
They did, they did. And it was the subject of some discussions with the HPEA, which I was involved with. And I believe we committed, and I hope we, I didn't check back, I hope we did provide that professional development, especially along those lines. But it's not, I believe, every year. It's once to get the course running. I think that was the request that was made, which was completely reasonable.
Right.
Scott, I defer to you, you know, day-to-day management.
So if I'm on the same page as we all are, the supervisors have been pressed upon me the importance of them getting time with Mr. Broadfoot, Mr. McCray, who are the projected teachers. Mr. Broadfoot's still teaching, hopefully teaching the course next year. Mr. McCray is projected to teach the English class during July. That is in our budget, to give them compensation, the teachers, to come in to meet with the supervisors. So there's no cost to the district because the supervisor's doing the PD, just for the compensation for the teachers. Does that clarify?
Yeah, that's a fair point. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Because, you know, like, looking at, we had the PD for those history teachers, not necessarily for English teachers or math teachers, or, you know, it's like, hopefully the professional, we weren't teaching professional, we weren't giving professional development on teaching mixed-use classes to teachers that weren't going to be doing that.
No, they were giving to the teachers.
Specific teachers, and now these English teachers are adding to that mix of teachers that would need this professional development, but it's being taught by the supervisors.
It is.
Right. I do think that as we get toward the springtime of this year, so we're about to wrap up the second year of the history honors option program, it'd be interesting to be able to compare where we are this year as opposed to at the end of the first year. And I would hope that we're, you know, making a good step forward, and the same thing could probably be anticipated for English as well.
That we have an opportunity to attract the juniors last year as seniors this year. Yeah, that's what your point is, yeah.
Poor independent teachers.
I had one other question, though, in going back to the waving in in math, and I think that, I mean, that's a direction that we're all behind, and my sticking point has always been to ensure the success of the students that do go into those classes, that have never been in those classes. How are we going to support them if they've been outside of that type of, you know, advancing, faster-paced classroom?
So Dr. DeCosia does administer an assessment. She collects information from teachers, recommendations, letter grades for the parent who's requesting a waiver, just to provide, Eluardian, just to provide all the information he or she needs before making a final decision. Hey, this is multiple measures, these are multiple measures that show your child's readiness to take algebra, to take geometry. It's up to you if you feel that he or she can do it. Maybe you know something that we don't know as a parent, guardian, then go for it. Sign the waiver, boom. So in other words, we're going to give them as much information as...
What's in place to support them? What's in place to...
In terms of support, once they go in.
Okay. Well, to be frank with you, we don't have additional supports right now in place. So if a student opts to geometry and hasn't taken the precursor course...
I mean, we really want to be encouraging the kids to go in, but we also want to be saying, "We're going to make sure you're successful," right? So we need to help them, especially those that are making a big jump.
I mean, ideally, it would be great to have a swing course during the elective period or the cycle period at middle school to provide additional support, but that requires staff. You know, the other option, obviously, is to do a better job training teachers to differentiate instruction if they have numbers of kids who start opting in, waving in. You know, if it's one or two students, I would hope and think that the teacher could provide the additional, the additional support.
I mean, all teachers...
I guess I'm thinking more in terms of like, you know, kind of, and I can't say after school, but I'm going to say after class or additional help, like on homework, or to go over tests, or prepare for tests of kids that may need that.
Well, we are building in now, a time at the end of the day where students can come in and do work, and now there's going to be a late bus, and there's all these like exciting things going on, so that's a potential time.
Right. But you know, I think those are powers that are going to be watching those groups, and I wouldn't, you know, I just want to make sure...
But teachers also, a lot of the teachers also have after-school hours where they invite the students to come in and get extra help. So this would open that door to a lot of other kids that might not have been able to take advantage of it before.
Make sure they go in.
I think that when we had discussed it, it was clear that we wanted to encourage students to, you know, challenge themselves and to understand that the help is there if they should ask for it, and to, you know, make sure that we are breaking down barriers to access. So whether or not that student earns a C or an A is kind of inconsequential. If that student gains confidence in their ability to be in the room with, you know, other kids, the smart kids, the ones who are always, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's kind of a psychological barrier to break down, just the idea that you're allowed to go there without taking a special course, paying extra money over the summer, which was the case previously.
Rob, you know, something just came to mind, very simple concept, but powerful, if it can work. Maybe engaging in National Honor Society students or key club students to provide support. In some school districts, National Honor Society students provide tutoring services. You know, so you have a kid who's taking Calc BC as a junior, as a senior, as a college-level calculus course, might be able to provide support to a Chiamashr student in fifth grade.
Might be a question for...
Yeah, we, we're both in NHS, and we do provide tutoring.
So I'm the NHS recruiter, and we do have a tutoring opportunity after school, Tuesdays and Thursdays, for students, I think it's Tuesdays and Thursdays. I'm not actually certain about the program itself, but yeah, we have that. And we also have individualized, there's a spreadsheet, anyone can sign up with guidance if they need help, and then they can just, they'll contact, they'll add on a spreadsheet, and then like, we members will like just take people to tutor if they need it. So there is tutoring service, there are tutoring services available if people want them.
Yeah. Is that just for the high school students, or do you market that to...
No, we can take middle school students, too.
Yeah. And what is it, what are the participation numbers like? Do you know? Like, what...
There's actually frequently more tutors than there are people seeking tutoring.
So maybe there's some way to like structure it differently, so that, like, the students that are interested and available for doing that actually have hours where they're there after school and this, you know, like, instead of having to sign up or whatever, you know?
No, we have both versions. We have a definite every Tuesday and Thursday after school. There is tutoring session with Mr. McCray and Ms. Marr heading it, and then students can go in, and then we always have tutors available for anyone who needs help. And then we have the individualized spreadsheet signing up, because for the individualized ones, it's more like topics such as AP chemistry, or like, specific courses that not everyone has taken, and then they need more help in, so then like, they have someone specific to help them, versus the tutoring sessions after school are more general questions, so that like, anyone could basically help them.
So you all mentioned to Ms. Marr that we talked, and I'm sure you could connect with her, too, and just see how, if you don't mind, I'd like to bring you into that meeting, and then Ms. Marr, just to make sure we have everything in place, as you suggest. So I'll make a note to do that.
All right. Could I ask a quick question about the, I wasn't totally sure what was going on with the math program? So the math program is going to be sort of marketed as something for students who are behind and want to catch up and make sure that they hit algebra by eighth grade. Did you say that, like, for kids who want to wave into a higher-level class who are not behind, there's no longer a summer course requirement? Or, I wasn't sure, I thought you said like, there's no longer to be the requirement that you pay $900 to go to Rutgers Prep and...
Right. I think that that was part of what changed last year, when we changed to the Title I funding and the Open Access program. What went wrong there was that it was not targeted help for the students who needed to, you know, jump the gap, I guess, into a place where they could land in Algebra I by eighth grade. So it was, you know, Open Access, but it was a little too open because the spots were taken by students who were then skipping, you know, two levels. And frankly, from what I understand, it's only a six-week program, right? So it doesn't really give you the equivalent of a full year's worth of math study. It's six weeks. So it's meant to be support. It's not meant to, you know, stand in for an entire course. So our hope is that if we are providing that support to students that are more targeted, you know, a targeted group of kids who have the ability, they might not have the resources to take a summer course, and, you know, who are prepared to do six weeks' worth of extra school, you know?
So like, would it be a student who, for example, I don't know how, so it would not take the place of a course for a student who is trying to get ahead in math to get to eighth-grade algebra?
Right.
Would it still allow them to jump up to eighth-grade algebra?
From my understanding, it's that it would provide the support that they would need to push themselves towards that wave. So they're still waving in, in effect, because they're not taking a full year's worth of math in six weeks.
I see.
Correct. You're right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if we're all done with curriculum, let's move on to finance with Mark, please?
Yes, thank you, Darcy. So the finance committee did not meet before today's session because we started a private meeting so early, bless you. But we did get a report from Linda, thank you. We do know that the number of students in the district has decreased by eight from last month. It's up by 17 from last year. We're very, very steady-state at about 1640 to 1650. It has not gone up at all. We also have gotten a more current list of unforeseen revenues and expenses, and the number of additional revenue is actually growing slightly. So as I said earlier, hopefully we'll reach that million-dollar number of free balance to move forward to next year. I did want to say one other thing, which isn't on this agenda at all, but that is that we have gotten the contract for the bus to go at 5:00 PM to Cedar Lane area. That solves two problems at least. One of them is the ability for those students to do homework in the after-school areas on the computers provided by the district, and it solves the problem for any student who lives in that part of town to play in any of the sports or other extracurricular activities programs. And we are planning, students have signed up, and we are planning to continue that next year. And it's wonderful. I'm going to say that a lot of that came out of the policy committee really feeling very strongly about equal opportunity to do homework, especially computer homework, of all students who might not have computers at home and might not have internet access at home. So that's just a wonderful start to give all students the same opportunities. So kudos. So I'd also wanted to say that we've been meeting, as you heard numerous times, about the preliminary budget. It's been difficult. We've spent a lot of time. Linda and Scott have guided us through. Myself and Rob Magaziner and Darcy have really worked hard with them to try to make this happen, and it's been difficult. It's been the most difficult. I thought the first year we did this, I did this, I think, the first time four years ago, I said, "Oh, my God, this is difficult." It's gotten harder and harder. The money is tighter, the needs are higher. It's really difficult, but I, you know, we have something, and I think it's, it's not perfect, but it's good. Okay, so on to the finance and facilities section. Items two and three are our usual general bill lists, cafeteria bill lists, and travel and related expense reports. Items four and five are the comprehensive annual financial report, which we're all given copies of. I'll be testing on that next week, so be prepared. And item five is to adopt the corrective action plan. The auditors found two or three items that we... we need to improve, and, and Linda, Linda is on top of those, and will be correcting those. Uh, Item Six is Resolution to Approve Contractors for Professional Services. Uh, so this is Independent Psychological Evaluations, Home Instruction, Staff Development Workshops, two different presenters. Item Seven is a change of out-of-district placement. Um, Items, uh, right, Item Seven. Item Eight are two new, uh, out-of-district placements, costing, just for the record, one of them $59,040, and probably, uh, additional transportation costs, and the second student going to High Point School, $66,960 annually. So these are very significant numbers than they are in next year's budget.
And we also made a point to put on there, and I, what I'd like to see us do from now on is to put the prorated amount also for this year.
For the rest of this year, yes.
So, um, wow, I took my glasses off, I can't see a thing. So the, um, the $59,000 is what will-
Will be for the full year.
Will be for the full year, and then the prorated amount for this, the rest of this year is $23,616.
Right.
So again, that's $23,000 dollars, not accounted for.
Fifty thousand not accounted for, it's going right into the budget.
Right, exactly.
Right, and there's more to come, and further on, unfortunately. Um, we have a resolution to approve bedside instruction for two students, um, and these are reasonable rates, you know, for somebody to come in who's trained in this, $65 an hour, $100 an hour. Um, we have the resolution to accept the following Highland Park Education Foundation grants. Again, thank you, HPEF and, and Rob, who meets, meets as part of that group. Um, and, uh, they are three grants for teachers at, um, at Bartle School, three for grants at Middle School, and one for the high school. These are all wonderful things that HPEF is doing.
And thank you also to the teachers for putting in the grants.
And putting in the time, yeah, the time and energy to do this once the grants are given to them. This is just wonderful stuff. Um, the, nine, Item 11 is, uh, moving IDEA money for, uh, into, into fiscal year 2019, uh, to carry over unspent 2018 grant funds. So we've revised the amount from the original, uh, original two amounts for basic and preschool. Um, Item 12 is an agreement with, um, with the town, and Rob, this is what I was describing in terms of renovation for the, the park complex and the track and the field turf replacement. So this is the agreement with the town to, um, uh, go to the county and try to get the county grant money. Um, and, and then the rest would be shared between the town, who has been putting money away in their, in their fund, and, as well as we have been in our capital reserve fund.
Do we know how much that is?
Uh, yeah, our piece of that, I'm gonna get a guess, it's about $175,000 or $80,000, and the county, the town will put their $175,000 or $80,000, and the county about $350,000. And, and again, it's not guaranteed they're gonna give us the money, and if they don't, we'll just carry it forward. And this is all long overdue. I mean, that field and the track are in terrible shape, and we need to do this.
I have bits of it in my house.
Yeah, I think everyone does. Um, Item 13 is approval of three agreements and release of terms. Uh, these are all, I believe, dockets which have to do with unilateral placements. We'll see the money coming forward, I guess, shortly. Um, I think they don't, uh, they don't overlap with what I've read in before.
Nope.
Um, 14 is the approval of a contract for fiber internet services. Um, this will cost us, uh, after rebates, an additional $300 a month over what we're paying now. And Item 15 is a contract for the purchase of wireless access points, uh, including licenses for a total of $44,000 and change. Um, and that will also, I believe, um, get us, I'm looking here, uh, oh, and this is eligible for, uh, the, um, the E-Rate discounts, uh, up to 60%. Uh, so this will, um, we had this discussion earlier this year about, um, internet access and how poor it was in some places, and you know, we even had it go down for a while. Um, this will replace all of that. Um, I think, um, oh, and I'm sorry, the third part is, um, some switches for, for a total cost of $71,000. And again, um, uh, we've done this through the E-Rate program, we'll be getting up to 60% off the price, um, and it'll be funded with the 2019, 20, um, uh, budgeted funds, uh, coming from capital reserve. Uh, Items 17 and 18 are, uh, proposals for roof, roof repair leaks at the middle school, totaling, uh, $12,300 to be done by Northeast Roof Maintenance. Item 19 is replacement of the vestibule at, uh, door at Highland Park High School to glass. We talked about this previously. Um, the cost, low bid, will be $5,072, that's in Item 20. And then Item 21, uh, 21 is the installation of a new set of doors. Uh, that will cost us 21, at, at, at Bartle, excuse me, uh, that will cost us $21,370. Again, this is a security improvement. And that, I believe, if I didn't miss anything else, no, I didn't, that's the full finance report.
Yep. Okay, anyone have any questions on any of that for Mark?
Yeah, I have one question, um, just about the, um, I guess relating sort of to the budget, but also to, um, the expenditures you noted in Point 8A. Um, so do we have substantive data on, as to why, uh, there are these students leaving our district? Have we, like, have we collected any data on why that is, and if we have, what have we done to, like, address that? Like, do we know anything about why they're leaving?
This is the special ed students who are going to out-of-district placements in 8A and B?
Yeah, that's what she's talking about.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just wanted to be sure. I think that would be a question for Scott and for the, um, for the Special Education Department.
Do you mean in these specific instances, or do you mean more generally?
I guess these, but also more generally, too.
I mean, in, in just about any of these cases, it's because we don't have programs in district that meet those students' needs. So if a student has an IEP, or what's called an Individualized Educational Plan, and we can't meet the terms of those plans, then we are obligated to send that student to a school that can meet those needs, and it's our obligation to pay for that. So anytime you see an out-of-district placement, um, that's because the district and that student's parents have come to an agreement that this is, so you see these two different ways that this happens, right? Where, um, it's just a resolution to approve an out-of-district placement, that means the parents in our district have come to an agreement, and we think this is the best place for that student. The unilateral placements are ones where the parents haven't consulted with us, or disagree with us, and they just take their student and they put them somewhere else, and then they sue the district for us to reimburse them for the cost of that tuition. So there's those two different ways that that can happen, and the ones that we're calling particular attention to are ones that are coming through one particular attorney, they're students who never come to our schools, they have no intention of attending Highland Park Public Schools. Very often, they go to a private school from kindergarten through 8th grade, and then once they hit 9th grade, um, they enroll, disenroll, go somewhere else, and then ask us to take them back.
So these aren't the unilateral?
No.
These are not?
No. The agreements in number 13, those three are.
Yeah.
Those are all unilateral, bleh, unilateral placements that have been settled, and then on future agendas, you'll see those dollar amounts.
So every, one reason why you may have heard me talk about lower-grade behavior therapy programs that we think can help attract our kids from out of district, come back, is because we feel like we can accommodate those kids. If we build a program, it's a little bit more difficult to do it in the upper grades. Um, the services become more expensive.
And a reason you might see a, a student in 8A or B is they perhaps just moved into the district.
Right.
That's why it would be a partial year, or a student whose IEP either changed, or just recently got an IEP for a variety of reasons. But as Darcy said, these would be cases where we don't have a program in the district to, to, uh, help that student.
Okay, um, anybody else have any questions for Mark?
Uh, yeah, on, uh, was it like 18 or 19, uh, down the, the Bartle School work, is that all related to the doors at the top of the stairs where there's no handicap access?
It's, it's, will it answer that question, Mark? It's the main entrance.
It's the main entrance.
Yeah, so what'll happen?
It's the main entrance.
Much like the middle school, like, it's, that bar will have its own vestibule area.
And then, um, a quick one on the, uh, on the turf. Uh, the maintenance that was set aside, do you know if that could, if that includes any sort of funding towards redesigning the entire football field based on, like, the, the materials that are available now versus what's there? Because most likely, you wanna be able to just go out and pull it up and replace it with the same material, because that material and the, and the systems that were used, uh, 12 years ago are no longer available.
Right. What Linda has presented to us would be using the most modern new, new field, uh, materials.
And there are actually, I think, through, two or three different options of types of material that they could use.
Okay.
And it includes removing what's there, and then-
Right, well, sometimes they just go over the top of it, other times-
Yeah, no, no, that's why I was pointing out, like, we've, we've seen some of the bids, and they, it's, they're, it's being removed, and then it's being replaced.
And back it up and recycle some of the material, but then sometimes it also involves-
Is it a one or a two? We only recycle ones and twos now.
Taking everything up, all through the, the existing grave below it, to put in new drainage systems.
They, they determined that we didn't need a new drainage system.
Awesome. So we did that, we did that engineering.
Yes, yes.
It's still, it's still a fortune. If they, if they, if we, if we didn't, hadn't 10 years ago to give Linda and the board at that time credit, make this deal with the, with the council, Borough Council, and, and get that county money then, that never would have gotten done, and it certainly won't get done now. We don't have a spare $750,000 in capital reserve. Uh, we have barely, you know, to get the $175,000 or $180,000 we might need, but it, it can get done.
Linda, question. Uh, during our discussions about this, there was, we did talk about the potential logo in the center of the field. This, this dollar amount is not included, just to be assuring everybody. This dollar amount is not included, but what was that dollar amount? Do you remember?
It was like $25,000.
Right.
Yeah, it was insane.
So if there's somebody out there-
Go Owls!
That would like to contribute about-
Twenty-five grand worth of Go Owls!
$25,000 to put a, a, an owl logo in the middle of a football field.
Or picture their face, or, you know, we could be flexible.
I, I, I would say, watching those, how those logos go in, and, and seeing them over time, those logos are like one of the first things to fail.
Yeah, they need to be constantly replaced.
You don't think that would be a good expenditure of $25,000, Rob?
I, I, I would love to see someone donate that sort of fund, but then I would hate to actually share that in the short term.
No, I think we might have other uses, actually.
I'm writing to Mark Zuckerberg right now, I want Zuck bucks for that.
I, I have a hard time voting for that.
Uh, I had a question about the glass doors at the high school. How would that be safer? Is it gonna be bulletproof glass, or is it just like more vigilant?
Okay, so, uh, no, we did price out bulletproof glass, and it's prohibitively expensive, but there is a 3M material that we are going to be purchasing and installing on the doors at both the high school and Bartle School, once they're, once the doors are installed, that will make them, uh, more shatterproof, and harder to get through. It'll take a little bit more to get through these doors.
Okay.
But the, the point of the glass doors was to be able to see the, uh, any potential, um-
Intruder.
Intruder, yeah.
We do have the camera at that door, and there's, like, already windows there, so I was wondering if-
The camera gives limited, uh, scope of visibility, though. It's not like seeing, you know, through a door, just like every, the doors here at the, um, middle school and at Irving School, they have, you know, they can see fully. They, there's no way that anybody could conceal a weapon.
Besides weaponry, it's also really easy to get hit by that door if you're not tall enough to see through the window. It's just a silly thing, but it's like-
Somebody coming out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, it's getting late, I'm sorry.
Anyway, glass is the way to go.
Yay, glass!
Okay, uh, anybody else have anything else for Mark? If not, we will move on to personnel with Ann.
All righty, here we go, personnel. We had our meeting, we mostly discussed confidential personnel matters, so I don't have much to share, apart from what you heard in executive session. Um, let's see. Uh, most of the items on this list are not controversial and are self-explanatory. I see here that we're approving a paraprofessional lunch aid for Bartle School at number three. Is that someone who's already employed in the district, presumably? Okay, not a new para. Um, let's see if there's anything I wanted to point out. We have some medical leaves, extensions of medical leaves, volunteers, uh, Mr. Harper filming our board meeting. Um, let's see. Oh, um, I don't know if you wanted to talk about this, Scott, but number 13 is about the Youth Participatory Action Research Project that's gonna be happening at Bartle School for the rest of this year. Would you be able to shed light on what that is? I know you told me a little bit.
Yeah, first I have to thank Monique. Um, you may recall, Monique, you didn't wanna turn us on to this, and here it is. So, uh, these stu, these are names of students who we'd like to approve to work with our Bartle kids, these are Rutgers undergraduates, um, to engage our kids in some kind of action research. They're literally gonna teach the kids how to research a problem or practice specifically related to equity, that's the focus. And then they can, then the, our students are gonna present the results of their research. Action research has the kids identifying a problem, they're gonna implement some kind of an action to resolve the problem, and see if the action was effective. They're gonna present this at a conference at Rutgers with four or five other school districts who belong to this consortium. It's a small group. That's essentially it in a nutshell.
Sounds, how many kids would be eligible to participate?
Uh, that's a-
Good evening, students.
Good question. We haven't, we haven't put a cap on the number yet. Um, so, can I, so as far as I know, it's open to all students who volunteer, as soon as the board approves the students, um, on the, what's the next meeting, the 28th? No, 25th, we'll put the call out for kids and see how many we get, but there's no cap right now.
And they also, I would just add, Scott, they get a day at Rutgers, too, like a visit to Rutgers Campus, um, as a part of this program, which is kinda cool. Not a day, a half a day, or whatever the hours are.
So thanks, Monique, for that.
I just wanted to ask really quickly, how's transportation provided for that?
I assume it's all through the program. I haven't heard that there are costs involved, and including transportation costs, so, um, yeah, but that's something-
No, there's no, there's no cost.
No, no, no cost. I was just hoping it wasn't contingent on parents driving kids to Rutgers.
Oh, no, 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 definitely not.
Okay.
Yeah.
This looks great. Wikipedia has an entry on it, for, if you wanna start looking at it. It, it looks amazing.
It's an amazing program, yeah.
I'm so glad we're doing this.
They have groups in New Brunswick Schools, all schools in the area except for us, and we're right here.
Oh, fantastic. So hopefully we will continue this next year as well, since this year is drawing, not to a close, but, you know.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, sort of. It's drawing to a close in my mind. Um, okay, we have some PD, translators, uh, Rutgers, uh, volunteer observers, observers, I guess they're called. Um, and that's about it. Um, I did wanna, um, as we discussed, Scott, I mean, I, I would like for personnel to be included a little earlier in the budget-making process when there are RIFs that are at issue. Um, both because we have members who have real expertise in that area, particularly Ruth with special ed stuff, um, who will ask questions that I, I just don't know what, what to ask. Um, also because it's embarrassing for me to find out about them on Facebook. You know, that's when I learned that we had RIFs coming up, was when I, I saw a bunch of Facebook posts, so I'd like to be involved in that, or members of my committee should be involved in that. Um, and I know you guys were racing against time and had so much to do, but, you know, just a heads up. Um, I, I assume that we're gonna need to hire additional staff for this therapeutic behavior room that's under discussion? Is that included in this budget?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
And on April 15th, Suzie'll tell you what they look like. Um, but actually, we're gonna be using an existing teacher.
So we're not hiring anybody new?
Uh, I believe we would have to hire one paraprofessional, but that individual is concluded in our, um, consideration for how many paraprofessionals we'd have to cut from the total budget.
I see, so we're cutting one fewer than we would otherwise, absent this program?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not hiring anybody new, is what you're s-
No.
Okay. That, I, I, I look forward to discussing that more, that seems, uh, I'm having trouble understanding how we would open this new therapeutic behavior room.
Because we'd bring students back.
What?
Because it brings students back.
No, oh, no, no, I, I don't mean why we would do it, I think it's a good, bottom line is a good idea.
I can break it down for you in a nutshell, real quick, if you'd like.
Okay, I, I, I just want to know what's, what are those teachers being pulled from?
Therapeutic program, um, I forgot the ballpark cost, it's like around a hundred twenty-five, something thousand dollars, around that number, I might be off a little bit.
Except for that.
That would include psychiatric services from Rutgers University Behavioral Health Care and supplemental therapeutic support. That would qualify as, as a program that could receive students from out of district. We anticipate bringing back four students from out of district, so right there would be a cost savings. We have, um, two students in district who we would keep in district, otherwise we'd have to send out of district. So that's one reason why our out-of-district tuition costs are less than what they could have been. And we have enough slots open for up to four out-of-district tuition students at a cost of forty thousand dollars a student. So you put it all together and we're actually ahead.
Now, I see the financial, uh, you know, point to it. I mean, does that mean that the two, the four students we'd be bringing back, their parents have already agreed that this?
No.
So we're hoping that they'll come back?
And I presented as a caveat that it's not anticipated, but even if all four.
Right.
Even if all four students don't come back, we will still be ahead financially.
Right. I, I mean, I'm gonna hope to hear a lot more about this room will look like. I remember when Ms., is it Boudin or Boudine? I keep forgetting, Boudin?
By caller, it was Boudin.
It was Boudin?
Yeah.
When Boudin was here, I remember trying to get some clarity about what kind of, what it meant to have a therapeutic program. She said, well, you know, it means a lot of things, it really depends on the student, some students may need psychiatric care, some students may need intensive counseling, and it sounded, from some of the budget description, like maybe it's gonna be a room. And I, I'd like to hear more about what that.
Well, she'll break it all down for you April fifteenth.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm totally excited about the idea of just, of a segregated behavior management classroom, but.
It will resemble our current self-contained rooms in which we have students also mainstream for part of the day and for the other part of the day receiving the services in-house.
Okay. All right, and how, where will this extra, so there's gonna be a new classroom opened up, it sounds like, that will at least be part of the program, is opening a new classroom up? And so that'll be a teacher that's shifted over from a current class? Where will the teacher for that classroom come from?
Can we, can we, Suzie's gonna have all of the information, so.
Part of what I, part of what I'm asking, I guess, is that I would like to hear some discussion about this and have some input into it, or at least let my committee members have some input in it before Suzie just presents it.
Well, if you'd like, I'll give you, when I call you about the LGBTQ ethem bias action plan, we can also discuss that.
That'd be great. I'd love to bring Ruth in so we can, I mean, we're having a personnel committee meeting on the tenth, I think, so.
I'll also provide you some documentation that I might clarify for you.
Okay.
Some of your questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to continue? Did you get through all the resolutions?
Uh, I, yeah, I believe, uh, yeah, that was just my question, um, from a personnel angle, um, where were the extra staff gonna be for the therapeutic behavior room? And it sounds like we're gonna move them from other places. Somehow. And we'll hear more about it.
Yes.
Does anybody else have any personnel questions? No? Okay, um, so policy, Mark?
Okay, so we, um, reviewed, uh, policy fifty-three fifty, uh, which is coming up for second reading. We made one small change, which I don't have my notes on it in front of me, but I hope that anyone who is interested read it. I think it's excellent, it's much better than what we've had, and it, it's more than excellence, really, really super excellent. Amy, Amy Seville has gone over it and, uh, who's a professional in the field, and I recommend that we vote positively on it. We also discussed the lateness, uh, policy and also the implementation of the lateness policy, and we came up with a number of ideas, which I did put down in writing on some minutes for the meeting. I, I never know if everyone got those minutes, but, um, hopefully you did. And, uh, we're gonna meet again in a few weeks and hopefully we'll discuss not only the, um, lateness policy, re-review the attendance policy in, in, in relationship to that, and then we have a list of four or five more to go through. But this is, this one has taken a lot of our time.
And I think Scott was gonna come to us, right, with, uh, the results of discussions with, uh, teachers, um, for new possible reforms to the lateness slash attendance policies, right, at the next policy meeting, we were gonna, yeah, Scott was gonna confer with teaching staff and administrators to get their on-the-ground perspective on it.
Also, I had a very productive meeting with the professional relations committee that Keith Presti heads about that, so I will share notes with the policy committee from them, some ideas that might assist in our.
Wonderful.
Discussions about arriving late to class and whatnot.
Fabulous, fabulous, thank you.
Terrific, thanks.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay, um, any questions on the policy?
No.
Okay, um, Monique, have anything for us, um, for Equity and Excellence?
Yes, we met on March sixth. A couple of these items we've already discussed, like the late bus and the one-to-one program, I know you said that would be coming up, so nothing to add there. Um, the other topic we discussed was this lovely seventy-one-page memorandum of agreement between law enforcement and schools, uh, law enforcement and education officials that we, our state mandated to, um, sign on an annual basis, um, that was revised. Scott did, um, inform us that we have some time to sort of look it over, see where our concerns are. We can apparently, while we have to sign it, we can't make any, any changes to what's there, we can add an addendum if we have some concerns about particular language. So we do wanna take time to look through it carefully. Our homework is to review it as Equity and Excellence members, but everyone has access to this document, so feel free to review it if you'd like. And I will field whatever concerns, questions you may have, as we will be discussing it in April in our next meeting.
To get my confusion, is it on the drive, under Equity and Excellence?
Yeah, it is, right, I think you shared it with everyone, maybe not? Yeah, and it's on the drive?
I'm just searching for memorandum of agreement, I'm only seeing.
And if not, I can follow that up?
I'll tell you.
Should I follow up, Scott, with an email to everyone? I thought you shared it globally, but if you don't see it.
I'll tell you in a minute.
I just can't find it, it might be called something other than memorandum of agreement.
Okay, if not, we'll make sure you get that.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
One area that we know we have a concern is, um, and that's in the area of reporting requirements in document, we just want some clarification on, um, you know, what's required, in terms of, on our part, uh, and information sharing with our, of our students. Let me just get to another point of that discussion, I'm sorry, da-da-da-da. Oh, another important piece to add to that, why we wanted to kind of wait on signing off on it is the fact that we know that our borough is going through, um, a transition in the police department with the new police chief hiring taking place in, in April, so it would make sense for us to wait until that process is complete before we begin discussions on, on signing this agreement. So that's that.
Monique, do we have much leeway in terms of the content in there? Like, do you just have to accept it wholesale, or?
In a sense, yes, however, I think, if I'm clear, Scott, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the, the way that we can at least, um, express our sort of, um, own district's school-wide philosophies and approaches to discipline, for instance, or suspension, is to add that as an addendum to the actual agreement. So while we do have to sign off and agree to what's written there, we can, and I don't know how much strength there is in these addendums, because that's what I'm not clear on, Scott, honestly, but that's what I gather that we can do.
That's a directive I was given from the county department of education, yeah, from the executive superintendent.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, if you read through it, it really, I mean, if you want to learn all the new things that could go wrong, you know, behaviorally or socially in, you know, a high school with teenagers, twenty-first century teenagers, that's, it's in that document, apparently. I think they updated to include jeweling and whatever the latest, or did they? Yes.
I'm sorry.
They updated to include jeweling and all the latest sort of.
Yeah.
Issues.
I'm sure that they can do now that we couldn't do.
Yeah, let's see.
It was more like compliance updating, you know, right?
Right, yeah.
And I'm not given a directive as to when I have to have this done, so as far as I'm concerned, we, and I think you agree, we should wait until the next chief is selected.
Oh, absolutely, I think that was a hundred percent in agreement. I thought you said there was a date that you had to have it signed off, but there's, it's not a rigid date, so.
It's a flexible date.
We are going with that.
We'll take the built-in ambiguity.
I mean, but hey, we've been signing this doc, this document every year, I mean, just think about that, right? You think about ours, like, how much are we, how mu- what's in there and what are we really signing off on? So we want to take some time to look at that and do what we can with the little bit of leeway we have to.
I have a hundred, the state directs us to do it because it's like their way of thinking, we're gonna finally have an opportunity to sit down with the chief of police and have a constructive conversation. But nine times out of ten, I've worked in two districts now, wish I could do this, you just give it to the chief, he signs off or she signs off, and then we sign off, that's it, we don't talk.
Yeah, no, that's not happening here.
And it is a state requirement. This one, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's a state requirement, yeah, so.
And when I went to that presentation at workshop last October, the folks who work on the memorandum of agreement were part of that same presentation with the folks who are trying to build a different system for how schools and.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement and county prosecutors all interact. So that's something that I've copied Monique on, is a conversation between myself and the mayor and Councilwoman Welkowitz to try to bring some of those folks here to give that same presentation, so we can try to, as we have this new, you know, law enforcement personnel moving in, try to change the way.
Yeah.
That relationship works. Because it's our county prosecutor who's on board with, you know, changing, like, he doesn't want to see our kids move up through, you know, our pipeline into the local pipeline into his, like, he's trying to push those kids back down and saying, you know, no, you deal with all kinds of issues in your schools, here's another one you need to deal with, don't send them to me because a kid is having a behavior issue.
Yeah, and that's the biggest, that's one of our concerns, too, is, okay, what's, what's legally required to report and when do we have to call law enforcement and?
Right, right, and that's exactly what they're trying to stop. They're trying to stop those, those kinds of incon- what turn into inconsequential referrals that they don't do anything with, but have real consequences for those students. Because once the students become just kind of like another cog in that wheel, it just changes their whole perception of themselves, I think.
And what was your response from the borough on that? Are we going forward that they're good with that?
They, they claim to be interested, so.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll make sure everyone gets that document. The other thing that feeds, the other topic that feeds into that, skipping over technology and the late bus, oh, suspension research, um, and this ties in certainly with memorandum of agreement. Scott put together a really nice handy-dandy table, um, of his own research findings, uh, the literature around suspension and, um, disproportionality of suspension practices, the ineffectiveness, and we're talking specifically about out-of-school, zero-tolerance policies. And, you know, Scott basically just shared with us how conclusive kind of the evidence is that out-of-school suspension is not only ineffective, doesn't reduce problem behaviors, it increases the likelihood of additional suspensions in the future, perpetuates disparities because students of color are more likely to receive, um, punishment in schools in their white peers for the same behaviors. So a whole host of problems, um, in the data, and maybe two, uh, studies that he revealed showed some positive, um, impact, but very minimal and questionable data, honestly. Did you want to interject there, Scott?
Well, uh, couples with that, um, the Equity and Excellence Committee tasked me to put together a flowchart that would represent, uh, a pathway to vastly improving our in-school suspension program, and I've completed that flowchart, it's actually a very good exercise, so I'll present it to the committee next. It's, uh, it starts with a ideal, uh, whole, what I refer to as a wholly support-based in-school suspension program, um, that's where I would like it to be, where it is now, I would call it a very partially support-based in-school suspension program.
Good.
Good, well, that, because that was the next conversation that we had, so thank you for that update already, uh, because talking about out-of-school suspension and how we want to move away from that model as much as possible, well, then we have to beef up what, what's happening in our schools, and we do have to sort of provide students with an opportunity to get some sort of therapeutic support outside of the classroom. So we're happy to hear that we were concerned in our discussion about, well, what's really happening in ISS and what is the, um, sort of protocol and guidelines that are being followed, so we'll look forward to hearing that. I know you want to share it board-wide at the next board meeting, possibly? I think that's important, because there have been conversations even amongst parents, there was some headline not too long ago about a parent who was able to somehow, um, observe ISS in her son's school and was just, it was, it was deplorable what she saw, her student, her child sitting there for the whole day, you know, in, in school suspension, doing nothing, essentially. And I know that's not what's happening here, but it just sort of reminds us to use that time with the resources that we have to really help our, our students be able to reintegrate. So I think that does it, let's just make sure that's it. Oh, the last item that we talked about, um, is the REACH conference, which I guess, Scott, you're gonna present maybe at the next meeting, your highlights from the REACH conference, and I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but it is, it was an equity and urban education-focused, um, conference in Atlanta with big-name A-list speakers. So we're looking forward to hearing your highlights from that.
I'm looking up the acronym, I forgot it myself, but, yeah, I have a full presentation planned.
Excellent.
Okay.
It's, oh, okay, I'm sorry, last thing that I do want to emphasize here, this is very important, we've been talking about this, but building, um, networks for our district with other schools that are doing restorative justice work, you know, focusing on changing their discipline models, because we, this is not an easy task, you know, we're, this is a lot of work involved and we need to be networking with districts that are on that same path, and they're, they're there, they're out there, may not be next door, but they're there. So we talked, and Scott, I know is, is gonna be really on that, making sure that he has his own professional sort of colleagues that they can network with and support each other with through this process. So. That's it.
Okay, um, the only other thing I would add is, Scott, you're so good at making these like little to-do, tasky kind of things. One thing that I think would be really interesting to look at is at the end of the year, to look at how many kids are availing themselves with the late bus and how that's going.
Right, yes.
And, you know, even where, you know. Yeah, just taking a look at that would be really interesting. Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything else on Monique's report?
Okay, so that brings us to our next public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, um, there should be a sign-in sheet there, you can sign in your name, please, and then also state your name and address, um, into the microphone for the board secretary.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, and good evening, Chairperson Semerusti. My name is Derek Schilling. I live at three forty-four Becker Street on the south side of Highland Park, where I've been a resident for seventeen years now, and I have a child who's in school age at HPMS. My comment has to do with the fact that on the twentieth of March, so in two days, is the International Day of Francophonie. Francophonie is an international organization of which there are eighty-eight member states, all nations recognized by the United Nations, and it is headed by Secretary-General Louise Mushikam Kowabo, who is from Rwanda, and who came, in fact, during the genocide of the nineties, came to the United States to do a degree in interpreting at the University of Delaware, and she now heads this organization, uh, which is celebrating its annual Journée de la Francophonie. I'm a world language educator myself, and I wanted to just bring to the attention of the board some of the possible, uh, factors to take into consideration when you're thinking about long-term curricular opportunities for district students in the world languages. Why French? Well, there's one reason, uh, French, aside from the fact that it's the sixth or fifth, depending on the statistics you look at, most commonly spoken language in the world, is above all now a majority African language, that is, fifty-nine percent of speakers of the French language live in Africa. They are, they are overwhelmingly young, there are about four hundred and five million youth who are, who live in member states of Francophonie, and this has, I think, long-term, And this has, I think, long-term, long-term repercussions for the way that we think about French as a language. It's not Fr, it's not just France in Europe, it's not just Paris, it's not even just Paris and Quebec. It is very much a world language. And as we know already, it's one of the languages, it's, it's a working language at the United Nations, it's a language that's used by the International Olympic Committee, it's a key language of the European Union, and with Brexit, we don't know what the future of English will be as an official language in the Union. The reason I come forward to you is because I have some concern that there may be curtailments in the offerings of French in the immediate years to come and possibly program cancellations in a, in a longer timeframe. Highland Park can be proud of its very long history of training learners of French, many of whom would go on to complete minors or majors in the subject in college. And I would also like to take the opportunity to thank the World Language Faculty for supporting this endeavor. Any discussion, obviously, of curricular priorities leads to all sorts of difficult choices, but in this case, I think one other thing we might take into consideration when thinking about which world languages to support in our district is the fact that many learners, who we consider as heritage learners of other languages, may not really have meaningful choices if we were to discontinue something like French. For instance, let's take the example of heritage speakers of Spanish. Spanish, like French, Portuguese, Italian, Romanian, and others is a Romance language. There are lots of affinities between them. And for a Spanish speaker to be forced to take Spanish or Chinese rather than another language is not really a meaningful choice. By the same token, one might, one might think that a family who comes from China and doesn't want to take Chinese as a heritage language would no longer have a choice because it would be Spanish or nothing else. So I think that having a third-world language, if possible, as far as budget permits, in our, in our district schools, would ensure that speakers of heritage languages that are highly represented in our district do have the possibility for meaningful choices. So again, I would just encourage, in long-term planning, to think about the global demography of different languages. Again, French is the fifth or sixth most commonly spoken after English, Mandarin, Spanish, Arabic, and Hindi. Hindi and French are basically neck-to-neck, and this is something that I think it would behoove us to think about for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, did you have anything you wanted to add about what's happening?
No, just that we're still discussing the future of our world language program, and I hope to have a public response within the next few weeks, so please keep on the lookout for that. I'm not sure, by the way, unless you can watch our video recordings of the board meeting, I don't know how else you might would know. You said you have a student in the high school or in the middle school? Ah, okay. So perhaps you'd be finding out through Community K.
Middle School work is no longer offered at six, seven, eight.
Correct, right. And which, by the way, was a primary result of us not being able to find a viable candidate. Still an issue, apparently, in school districts all around the region. I understand Middlesex Borough, for instance, lost a middle school French teacher recently, have not been able to find somebody to replace that individual. It's very tough. I don't know why, but it is what it is. But I'll be keeping in touch with the community about the follow-up.
Thank you.
I just wanted to quickly just revisit the proposed elimination of the home economics program at the high school. I'm also a teacher at the high school. The focus tonight has been really on the money that the district is going to save by cutting this program. I just want to make sure that we also discuss what the district's going to be losing. Besides the loss, the priceless experiences that so many of our students who go through the program will have before they graduate, I also want to bring to light the money that has been invested in Ms. Mitchell as well. She's one of the 10 staff members that, who were initially trained and certified in restorative practices. She also has been trained to co-facilitate the Team Pep program that's been brought back to the high school. I'm involved in the bi-monthly presentations that, that are made and the great work that she has done to restore this vital program. I also wonder what will happen to the room in which houses the program and if any ideas of what electives will be offered in place. The glow students also utilize that space. We do life skills activities as well as events in there. And then our last point I would like to make is in regards to the use of the VOTEC program. How many students are currently taking advantage of this opportunity, and do you think that there will be an increase of students to take it, take that opportunity now that our program will be gone? Meaning that they will be leaving the high school, their friends, in order to do so?
Thank you.
Keith Presti, Highland Park President, Highland Park President.
The whole town!
HPEA President. I just wanted to, I noticed that the honors option has come up again on the agenda, and we were at the table at one point negotiating some of the terms of what an honors option would be, and that was put on hold while I, my assumption was the district was working out what the particulars, the specifics of the program would be, and that we would come back to the table. So that hasn't happened yet, so if we, if we are moving ahead approving it, then we should schedule a time to get back to the table to talk about what that's going to look like. And I think that the Board raised a lot of good points about, you know, in terms of professional development and teaching multi-mixed level classes and stuff like that. I think that needs to be addressed, also the fact that there is not a curriculum yet for it. So I think all these things need to be talked about and addressed. And then I was, Monique's presentation about restorative practices and limiting suspensions and things like that, and we were just speaking about that the other day in our Professional Relations meeting. It was, you know, brought to my attention from middle school and high school staff that they're feeling a little frustrated with the state of discipline and what we're experiencing and what we're doing right now. And I was the first to say that I don't think out-of-school suspension does anything for anybody. So I'm glad to hear that, you know, and what was said at that meeting, too, is that we do need to think of the alternative. If we're not going to suspend students, then what are we going to do with them? Because there are, you know, and it was also raised that we, there was a lot of time spent in, in developing a code of conduct that has been rolled out, and we don't, would necessarily feel like it's being followed right now. So we would like to see the code of conduct filed in conjunction with then restoring, and we think that, you know, there needs to be a little more monitoring of the restorative justice, you know, outrolling that we did here. We don't want to be the district that says we're restorative but not practicing it. So I think if we, you know, and we said this at the meeting, too, that, you know, there really needs to be a few individuals who maybe were present at the start of it, who were trained, that can monitor it and decide, you know, this is working, this is not working, this is the next piece we need to add, this is the additional training we need to have. So, so hopefully we can work together in making this happen.
So maybe the next time, Keith, the three of us haven't sat down in a while. Maybe the next time the three of us sit down, we can figure out where the best place is to hash that out, like, get some staff together, with some administrators and some board members, and figure out where the best way is to work out those kinks. And I appreciate you bringing that forward.
I also thought, I proposed to Keith, that we could bring it to the central leadership team. That's the new group that's arose, that's arisen, so perhaps that's also a good place for us to talk about, the concern that you brought to my attention.
Yeah, so I think we're, maybe next week, see if we can...
Okay.
I think we have a meeting scheduled.
Sounds good.
And I'll send something about the honors option. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Scott, if I could ask a question? Oh, no. What was my question? Ah, restorative practices. Do we still have a consultant who's available to us to sort of check in with the district?
We do, we do. Ms. Lux has been working with her. In fact, she just went to see some schools in Brooklyn that this consultant works with.
So that consultant, I mean, if we're having issues and they're not, things are, you know, are going slowly or difficulty, we can sort of bring those to the consultant and maybe get some recommendations? Is that, that's an option available to us?
And one thing she's helping Juliana do is revive the implementation plan, so it's fairly structured.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that, because we talked about this a bit in our Equity and Excellence Committee meeting, but how much guidance or support are we actually getting through that consulting relationship, and can we get more from it? I guess, not to say that anything is going wrong there, Anne Gregory's great, but I think we want to actually...
Oh, Anne Gregory.
Be able to pull more of her expertise and have her feel comfortable enough, you know, giving us more direct guidance.
I thought we still had a consultant from IIRP.
IIRP, correct.
Yeah, oh, Anne's different. Okay, Anne's different. Okay. Right, Anne's different, so...
But I agree that, look, IIRP has multiple consultants, and some of them are good, some of them aren't, so perhaps I could check in with her. She's found somebody who recently she connected with, she likes, she trusts, the one who she visited the schools with in Brooklyn a couple of weeks ago, so... But I think we should circle back to Keith's idea. He brought it up at the Professional Relations Committee, that we come up with a, in fact, I have it in my to-do list, a, I forget what we called it, but a restorative practice monitoring committee of some sort. But I also like Darcy's idea, so I'm going to hold off on that to-do until we meet. And, and at some point, I do think the district central leadership team should bring this up, now that we've gotten past the one-to-one and the homework access. I think that'd be a great place to hash out concerns.
Okay. So I kind of went over the stuff in my president's, that I wanted to talk about in my president's report when we had everybody here, which was a far better time to do it. So the only things I'm going to mention in my president's report are one very nice thing and one very not-so-nice thing. First, we want to say happy birthday to Dr. Taylor. And say, what a, what a way to spend your birthday. Thanks.
I still got two, an hour and something, right?
Next year, when you look at the calendar, can I just implore upon you to make sure you don't schedule a budget meeting on your birthday?
We knew this was happening.
I mean, come on!
We had no choice.
Come on!
What's more fun? Come on!
I'm going to add that into our meeting with the legislators, because it's just not fair.
And it was the big 2-0.
Just change the whole state's, just change the whole state's budget. And then I did also want to, I meant to mention this at the beginning of the meeting, and it just, it escaped my mind, I just wanted to point out that Ruth isn't here with us this evening, because unfortunately, last weekend, somewhat unexpectedly, she lost her mother. So we wanted to extend, I wanted to extend my condolences and the Board, Board's condolences to Ruth and to her family, and wish her and her family well. So I just wanted to mention that as well. Does anybody have anything they wanted to add for old business?
I don't know if this is old business. It might be new business, but either way, this is the right time. Everything feels like old business.
Let's call it borrowed. Sorry, I'm getting punchy, it's late.
So because Mr. Presti brought up the honors option, I thought that there was a part of the conversation that we needed to make sure was included in your meeting coming up next week, and that's scheduling at the high school. So the idea of having the honors option and having a heterogeneous grouping of students is that it's not, you know, especially in this small district, you have the same kids in your classes over and over, and it just gets more, you know, siphoned off, so that you're really segregated by the end of your experience at the high school. You're really segregated with a certain, you know, group of kids. And it's not because you're all interested in the same things, it seems like. It's scheduling that's an issue as well as our honors option. So my fear is that with all of these really great things that we're accomplishing, having heterogeneous mixing and the honors option and encouraging kids to, you know, challenge themselves and try for honors, is that we are going to still have those same groups of kids and not heterogeneous groups. Because, you know, I see it in my own high schoolers' schedules. So, so scheduling is a big part of the conversation, I think, in making sure that we have what we really want. And what we really want is, you know, kids in classes with kids that they're not always in class with. So, so that's just important, I thought, for us to remember in the conversation.
Thank you. I wouldn't have thought of that, so.
It's tricky. The schedule is tricky.
Well, and that's something you guys are looking at in the next couple of weeks, right? Is kind of...
Scheduling. Mr. Laster starts the scheduling, and yeah, mid-April, mid to late April. Yeah, and I can't tell you, Michelle, if that's accurate. I mean, you're seeing, you're seeing it as a parent.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the other classes look like. I really don't.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I do know that it's a concern that I've seen in not just my own students at home, my own children, but in their friends, and it just seems to me that, you know, our focus needs to be really front and center, and the focus is that we want to have less segregation, not, not unintentional segregation as a byproduct of our, our honors option. You know, we want to push for experiences that the kids are going to be learning from the richest possible environment, so that, you know, scheduling is kind of an issue.